I'll call this meeting from order. This is a meeting of the council for the city of Southfield. It's a committee of the whole meeting for May the 16th, 2016. Madam Clerk, would you please call her on?
Thank you. Councilwoman Seymour and Morris will not be present tonight. Your councilwoman Cruz will not be present tonight. Mr. Brightwell?
Here.
Mr. Kirk, yes?
Here.
Mr. Mandelbaum?
Here.
Mr. Fraser?
Here.
You have four members present.
Four members will get us going. That's a quorum, so even though we have an abbreviated council, we still have a full agenda. Our first item on our agenda is authorization to sign the amended Michigan Mutual Aid Fire Alarm System Association Agreement. Mr. Buzor, would you like to kick that off?
Actually, I'm going to refer to...
He was told not to speak.
So two words can speak.
Here's what I know about this, working with the acting chief. So, this is a mutual aid agreement that the city has been a participant in since 2008. Cities of Royal Oak, Bloomfield Township, Ferndale, Madison Heights, Birmingham, West Bloomfield Township, and Waterford with the city. In that agreement, one of the provisions that is in the existing agreement states that for your mutual aid partners, if you ask them to respond to a situation within your city, the first eight hours is free. You're not able to recoup or get reimbursement for that first eight hours. If it extends beyond that, certainly you can make a claim, but the first eight hours are free. And what they were finding is a practical matter was that for... that worked okay, except it didn't work for special operations calls. And special operations in the agreement now would consist of like hazmat-type activities, trench rescue, kind of the real formal kind of situations where there's additional training, supplies, equipment. So, there is a proposal, and that's what this is, to simply amend the agreement to say that when it comes to special operations requests, then that eight-hour no reimbursement does not apply. So, you're able as a... if we got called into, say, Waterford, and they were asking for a special operations, say, the hazmat team, we would be able to charge from theoretically minute one, and the eight-hour rule would go away for those type of things. So, that's all that changes. And I talked... I'm just talking to the acting chief, and fire departments in support of this. And in essence, if council's okay with it, we put it on the 23rd for a formal approval of the amended agreement.
Okay. Mr. Mandelbaum?
Do we know, just in general, how many hours in the past have we... would we be charged, or would we collect?
I... you know, I think typically because we have all of these special operations, we have the hazmat, we have the trench rescue, a lot of the other cities don't have that. So, my instinct is that we would be charging more than we would ever be charged, because we do have those special ops teams. And a lot of the cities don't, so we're called often, and this way, we're going to be able to charge. It should be a net positive in terms of reimbursement.
We can check on the amount of revenue that that person did. For example, a year and a half ago, there was a spill at the gas station that it was Lincoln in Greenfield. Our officers were the ones who stabilized that site. They were pretty much running that show, even though it was in another community.
And they were down with the trench rescue down River or something?
Yeah.
Harper Works spent a lot of hours down there. So, I mean, I think that because of their training, their sense of training, they have... they do get called. And again, for these mutual aid partners now, clearly, we can charge.
Okay. Mr. Focaccia?
I agree with the recommendation, but I guess I'm sorry to hear that, that, you know, the spirit of cooperation has been part of public safety forever. If somebody should get hit with a tornado, you know, and we get by with it, we're going to say, well, he'll show up, and, you know, we've got a count of hours. I don't know where it starts and when it stops. I, you know, I don't like our departments being used, because we're the only ones that have that ability to do whatever they have to do. But at the same time, you know, we've been saved by Detroit. Down... we had a big fire down in the south in apartments, and Detroit came to help us. And I just bring it up because I think that we're being used because we're so advanced. But at the same time, you know, the spirit of helping our neighbor is what it's all about.
Sure.
And I don't know where one starts and one stops.
Well, I think that for the normal response that's requested, like fire service, bring a truck, you know, put water on a structure, that... there is no charge for that. It's only the problem came with the special operation.
The eight hours.
The eight hours, yes.
Listen, guys, when the towers fell down in New York, we sent people. You know, we didn't charge New York for being there and helping out, and we got... we risked their lives in that building. And I just... when I was reading this, I was just thinking of the times when people helped us, and, you know, we didn't give you a bill afterwards.
Right.
And with weather conditions where they are, you know, somebody's going to have a terrible storm, a tornado or something, that we're going to be asked for our advanced groups that we are accustomed to working with to help out. You know, someone will sit there with a clock and say, okay, we're on corner others.
Well, I think some of it was...
So, I just have to... I just don't know how to... you can't write it in, but there's got to be a certain amount of assistance to our neighbors that isn't, you know, charged, but it's goodwill. And I really don't... I mean, the county's got rigs now, too, you know. They're going to charge us if they have to come in, and some of the environmental drops that happen, and they bring that big vehicle in. I think they got two now, don't they? I don't know John's name. Bill James is there. Anyways, but they got equipment. Now, we've been up there looking at county stuff, you know, and...
Well, and that's the significance of these intercooperational agreements, mutual aid, what we do out of the county, out of the airport hangars, and all of that is meant to... we have a crisis, we have additional resources, and it'll come in. This contract actually memorializes the terms of, you know, certain things, first eight hours is free. After that, after eight hour, there's a charge. And then for special operations, which we have a stronger concentration of special operation services than other communities. So, it's about optimizing items for our taxpayers as well as our neighbors.
No, I understand. I understand where you're going. I'm just saying is that in reading it, I felt like there's a change... there's a change in helping your neighbor.
I think that will continue, though, and I don't think this is intended to impact that, because the normal kind of requests, you know, bring a couple rigs down, that's going to continue.
But I want that message to be clear, though, that, you know, you've got a lot of small communities that are still out there, Franklin, Beverly, Southfield Township, they don't have food, you know. And they may have the same kind of tragedies that we face. And, you know, matter of fact, the Condo, the Condo fire they had in Beverly were the ones that actually put the whole thing out, you know. But anyway, I just raise that because when I was reading this ordinance, I just, I got the, you know, feeling of, if somebody's going to be bringing a car, I say, you want to pay me to get you out, you know? I mean, it's... anyways, I'm for it, anyway.
Mr. Brightwell?
I'm from... I'm from back in my veterans' commission base. Chief Healy, you know, gave me a lot of detail on this. And along those lines, I'm going to adopt this amendment.
Well, this is... we're just going to move it on to...
The 23rd.
We'll do it on the 23rd.
If there was consensus?
Yeah, if we all agree that...
Okay.
All four of us agree that...
Yes.
Yeah, we got to stick together tonight.
Right.
Yeah, I understand what Mr. Focaccia is saying, that, you know, it's the, you know, we grew up, you know, if a neighbor was in trouble, we'd run over and give them a hand and do whatever we could. I remember growing up in the country, you know, and this time of the year, a little earlier, people would burn off the field to keep from having a big fire. And everybody'd get a pail of water and a broom, and you'd go out there and you'd, you know, beat down the flames to make sure that the fire didn't get out of hand. But what it did was, it burned off all the dry grass, so that if somebody came by and the car threw a cigarette out, there wasn't a big fire. But that was a normal spring effort, and everybody just did it. Plus, the burned grass acted as a... almost like fertilizer for the new grass to come up. And so, I understand that. Then, on the other hand, if a small community doesn't have the finances, that they could have the kind of finances that our taxpayers have been fortunate to all give our firefighters, and that is like the trench rescue, the high-angle rescue, if they need that, an eight-hour charge is pretty inexpensive to have experts come out and help get them out of trouble, to be honest.
I may add, though, you know, that... but our... and I agree, because like our community has, and I'll say it that way, professional police and fire. And you have Farmington Hills who has volunteers.
Sure.
You have Troy that has volunteers. They really... they, you know, pat themselves on the back that they saved $10 million by having a volunteer rubbing us into it, you know?
Yeah.
In the meantime, you know, when they get in trouble, they call us.
Yeah.
So, I mean, there are, you know, reasons why I could see that we do this, but, you know, because... and that's what I've been struggling with, is...
Sure.
It's, you know, we'd love to have $10 million in our kitty, in our budget for public safety, you know, because we have some volunteers.
Right.
Anyways.
Yeah. Okay, so, Mr. Mandelbaum, do you agree that we should move this to the 23rd?
Yes.
Mr. Brightwell?
Yes.
Mr. Focaccia?
Oh, yes.
And I say yes. So, off it goes to the 23rd of the agenda. Second item on our agenda this evening is a proposed ordinance amendment, Chapter 101 permit inspection and appeal fees.
I'll just start it out really quickly, but Mark Pilot, the acting building official is here, and I know he's got a PowerPoint. In essence, this is another one of the ordinances that we've been working on with the building department. This will amend the fees for the building department. You'll recollect that we did this not that long ago, but I think Mark and Ed have tweaked even those. But when we did those last year, late last year, the building fees, we did not do the mechanical, the electrical plumbing. So, the bulk of what's here now in Chapter 101 are those fees. So, again, if there's consensus on this after Ed and Mark get done with the presentation, we would put this on the 23rd.
Should fees will be two different ordinances now?
Nope. All the building... all the building fees are in Chapter 101. So, that's where you'll find just about everything for building.
They've done some other things that are, I think, are pretty neat, too.
Because we just went through all the fees.
Yeah.
These were more electrical and plumbing.
Right. And they've streamlined some of the... not necessarily changed them, but streamlined some of the building fees.
I thought they had gone through that entire building.
Correct. Just the bills.
We went through... we did not do plumbing, mechanical, electric, more focused on building.
Okay, I just didn't know at the time that they said this is part...
God, this Moore's coming at you. Okay.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Okay, to start with, our mechanical, with respect to our mechanical, which is plumbing, electrical, and HVAC, heating, air conditioning, and ventilation, these fees haven't changed since 2005. And what we've done is separated these fees into commercial and residential lists, providing the contractors and homeowners a menu format for item selection. So, with respect to those fees, plumbing, electrical, and HVAC, they've been expanded, capturing fees for inspections that we were previously not addressed in our old fee schedule. Our building permit fees have been more refined to a graduated scale based on the construction value. And then, this is kind of important, our fees have been added for energy conservation inspections. Federally mandated requirements, which were passed down to the individual states, have been addressed in the recent changes in the Building Code. And since they were recently adopted, this is perfect timing for us to adapt to those changes, and we're on the forefront of that piece. We've gone to a lot of seminars lately, and a lot of communities haven't addressed these fees. We're in prime form at this point right now to get these addressed with the new changes in the code. Fees for rental, vacant, and apartment complex registrations have been added and revised based on the recent rental ordinance change, which we just passed. The fees are now reflected in the fee schedule. We are working on revising the vacant registration ordinance, but the fees have already been addressed in the fee schedule. And the fees for apartment complex registrations have been added into the fee schedule. Registration fees for contractors have been amended. This allows our department to obtain additional contact information for our permitting system, which will allow us to obtain our email correspondence for inspection results. We currently have tablets, and this is a part of that, the whole change in our department, where when we're going out on inspections, when we have the email addresses, we can, instead of coming back to the office and sending out a letter, these corrections will be sent directly to the contractor.
Or homeowner.
Or homeowner. And also, when we do our rental inspections, they're always anxious to get a list. Well, previously, we had to type those lists out, mail them. Now, we, through a check system in our tablets, we can send those corrections directly to the rental and vacant homes that we inspect, so they can get started on their work. They're always anxious to get the information as soon as possible.
And one of the issues, especially on the vacant end, is that you have a lot of new homeowners that are moving into the city and buying vacant homes. And when they're going to a closing, for instance, they may not schedule their final inspection until they get close to the closing or the day of the closing. So, that information is vitally important to them, to the new homeowner, to see that maybe the previous homeowner's going to pass those issues on to the new homeowner, and they need that list right at closing to see what their... what things have to be repaired to the home. So, getting that out to them right away by email is very important, instead of having to come back to the office, put it all together, take it off a handwritten sheet, and then retype it in again. This all gets entered into our surface tablets, violations get put in, and then it has a workflow that automatically schedules you for another inspection, and automatically puts the letter with the violations in it, ready to be emailed right out from... right out either in the house or in your vehicle, right out in front.
Okay, let's move on to fire alarm. Fire suppression fees have been revised, capturing inspections, again, that we were previously not addressed, and also capturing inspections based on the technology of those systems changing. Again, those fees have not been revised since 2005, and there's a lot of technology changes that have occurred, and we're addressing all those fees.
And part of the menu item is also, in the future, not too distant future, in order to make it easier for both the contractors and the homeowners, when they're online, you know, going through a menu item to pick items for their permit, they're... we're going to have to be very clear and succinct in each one of those menu items, so that they know, well, I'm putting in a dishwasher, I'm going to click on dishwasher. I'm putting in a disposal, I'm going to click on disposal. So, they'll actually see a language that they understand, and they'll see enough menu items on there so that they can pick those menu items, instead of trying to guess, what should I choose here? I don't see it listed here, so I'm going to have to take a guess at what I pick that covers that particular installation. We've broadened those fee items so that they're very clear to people, so that, like I said, if they don't come to the counter and aren't able to ask the question of someone at the counter, what do I write down, what do I check off? With these new lists, they'll be able to see much clearer what to check off without having to ask.
And basically, all of these revisions, they're going to provide ease of use for the permitting by both contractors and homeowners, and again, for our future web access in the department. Any questions?
Mr. Brightwell?
Is the... no, it's probably not. What's the total value of the fee?
Seven, eight, eleven?
Percentage-wise, that's hard to say, because we have captured a lot of fees that we were never getting compensated for. Inspectors would be out, and, you know, for two or three hours on a $50 permit, and that wasn't feasible for the department.
Sure.
These fees will pay for the inspectors to hide our debt.
No, I'm 100 percent supportive of this. But I'm just curious, you know, from any point, and I've heard historically that we were not compensated for a lot of the things that we were doing. So, this is obviously in the right direction, 100 percent for it. But I'm just thinking, was there a dollar value from zero to, you know, just to add on, if everything... well, it's not totally for them, we can add it up at the end of the year, but just...
Yeah. It's actually hard to say. I did a lot of research, and the department did a lot of research. We researched probably about 30 to 40 different units of government around the state, and we're right in the middle there.
Okay. Mr. Focaccia?
Yeah. It's kind of hard going through this, by the way. The... that 5-4, there's no page number on this thing. So, it's 5-4 under valuation. Let's see what helps me identify this page.
If you can get the section number, 8.1 something.
Yeah. It's right on the same page as 8.168.
8.168.
It says, "We require an additional reinspection and payment of a $50 reinspection fee."
It's in the news, paragraph five in the middle there.
Yeah, it's...
Law trades.
Yes.
Should just say period after $50, as opposed to...
Law trades are...
"We require an additional reinspection and payment of a $50 reinspection fee." Says it twice. Am I wrong?
"Work not repaired..." Well, that's actually two separate statements. That's two separate statements there. "Work not repaired at the time of reinspection," or "work not ready or available for inspection at the time the inspection is requested." Many times, let me just explain what happens here. Many times, we get called out on an inspection, and the contractor says, "We'll meet you there, we'll open up the building." We go out, they don't show up, they call us three hours later, "Oh, I forgot, can we reschedule?" And I've had a inspector there waiting for a half hour for this person to show up. Usually, we'll wait 15, 20 minutes. If they don't show up after that, we try and make the call. A lot of times, their phone number's not available, they don't answer, so...
No, I understand that. I was just looking at the last line it reads.
"We'll require..."
"We'll require an additional reinspection and payment of $50 reinspection fee."
Payment of a $50 reinspection fee. I would just say, "Be..." I don't even think you need to say "reinspection" again.
Which is...
Okay, well, I... we can tweak that, definitely.
There's one too many reinspections.
Yes, I think we can take the second one out of there, correct? $50.
No, we're talking about residential interior demolition, and it says non-structural, $100. I mean, how do you define that? All interior demolition, if they take a door out, is that... is that considered demolition? When you're removing something, non-structural, it's not... you're bearing doors, so you crave that, so bearing...
That wouldn't... that wouldn't be the case. What we would look at is, a lot of times, we have homes that have had water damage, and they'll want to remove... before they get their permits, they want to remove all of the drywall, all of the insulation, all of the carpeting, all of the cabinets, et cetera, and they want to get a dumpster on site. In order to track that work from occurring, we'll have them get a demolition permit while their plans are being developed and while they're getting their permits for the finish of the work.
It's also to ensure that...
And that's getting a contractor, if somebody goes in and tears down the bearing partition in the basement, for example, they want to make... wouldn't they do them out of two rooms?
That wouldn't... it wouldn't be something like that.
Well, it's demolition, by the terminology demolition.
That's correct. But a lot of times, we get requests from contractors to start work without obtaining the permits, and that covers that type of inspection and permit.
Yeah, but this is a contractor. You're not talking about a resident doing in his own house, that he has to get $100.
Not necessarily. If he has his plans already done, we'll encompass the demolition and the work into one permit.
So, they're not coming in... the only time that we would be issuing things like this, issuing permits like this, is if, like Mark was saying. So, let's say, for instance, we have a fire job, and the whole house needs to be gutted, everything needs to be taken out, and maybe some electrical needs to be capped properly, some plumbing needs to be capped properly, before they can even get a scope of work together and a building permit together. This is not for a homeowner who's, "Okay, I'm going to redo my basement," or "I'm going to add a room on." He's not going to be charged for demo fee to take the walls down if he comes in to get a permit, a building permit first. This is to handle the stuff that we don't have a building permit on yet.
Yeah.
Can you share the golden story on the demo?
Wait, let me... let me get... when you're talking about permits and plans, and somebody... the resident is doing their basement, and they're taking down a wall, that actually is demolition. Now, they're supposed to come in to the building department with a plan of what they're going to do in their basement?
Yeah.
And also a permit?
If they're doing something in their basement that requires a permit, okay?
Well, that's what I'm trying to find out. Demolition of a wall is a non-bearing...
No, a single demolition, if they're just removing a wall, and it doesn't have any electrical on it, let's say it doesn't have anything, and it's just a dividing wall, okay? That wouldn't even require a permit, demolition or otherwise.
Common sense, right. Well, you know, but if you're talking about common sense, you're talking about residents who... a lot of our residents have ability to be carpenters and plumbers and things, and they do change their... their things in their house as they see, or if their family gets larger, or whatever they want to do. Anyways, rental registration is $300. There's no page number, but anyways, it's under application fee, non-refundable fees for... yeah, 8172. Rental, vacant, and apartment. So, if they... if they want to... we have, like I heard the other day, we have over 400 vacant homes in the city. Okay, if somebody wants to come into our city and get a home and fix it up, and you can sell it or rent it, they first are going to have to come in with the $300 for its 200 inspections.
Two.
Or two, two inspections, yeah. That's if... that's if they did the work and don't...
This is just a register.
Yeah, yeah.
Just a register.
Then, then to recertify the rental compliance is $175. Then, then to recertify the rental compliance is 175 more, and then the reinspection fee on completed is another $50. I just, you know, I mean, I think, when you go down this thing, you know, before you, your fees to take and cover all the things, that's just what you're gonna do with that house, then you go to residential things, then it goes even worse because then, I mean, $15, you wanna put a dishwasher in, $15, you wanna put a disposal, $15, you wanna put a drawer opener? I mean, I'm just saying, I mean, by the time you add up, all they say, are they supposed to come and get a permit, a plan and a permit, and a list of things they have to do, and pay for all the things, like putting in a sink, that, you know, to replace a sink, you're gonna have to pay a fee?
Well, let me explain this, okay?
Well, I'm just trying to understand, what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to address is if we wanna get these 400 homes occupied, fixed up, I mean, are we putting a wall up to stop some people, or most people, from buying these homes up and trying to fix them up?
I don't think so. Let me briefly explain, just the rental to start. The current fee for rental is $200. The registration goes for-
To three other years.
I'm looking at the old ordinance, the current fee is $200. The rental registration was for two years, now it is for three years. We're reflecting $300 fee for three years, that's a one-time fee. Every three years, they need to recertify that house for $175. The $300 is a one-time fee to get that house into our system, track it, do the inspections, and it is certified and registered for three years. After three years, they have to come back to us and have another inspection, that's $175. It covers the two inspections and the clerical time to do the registrations. To be honest with you, we do a lot of rental inspections, and very few of them have to obtain permits. It's maybe a minor item here or there, and there's base fees for permits of $50 plus the administration fee of 40. So, one permit's gonna cost you 90 bucks, but you're gonna get a lot of items for 90 bucks. And that's gonna include two inspections.
Give me an example, a HUD home. If you buy a HUD home, you go to the building department, and they have a list, or somebody prepares a list, you pick it up at the building department, you look at what is needed, the permit compliance, and you go, and you get all these things done, and then you call for an inspection, right? Now, when you do that, say, for example, the person, when he gets his HUD list, finds out that, you know, "I wanna bring this bathroom sink up to-"
Something new.
A chip or something, I think you're gonna, all right? So, he's gonna have to go and pay $15, call the city and say, "You know, by the way, I wanna put in this sink too, I'm gonna give you another $15." Is that correct?
Essentially, yes. That's correct.
So, if somebody goes, I mean, tell me like it happens, you've got, rubber's picked up on Tuesday, and you go see a sink out in the garbage, you go, "Well, I'm saying, hey, did you get a permit to remove this sink?" The guy says, "I don't know who put that sink there." All right?
Well, I don't know that we're chasing-
I've never done that.
Let me tell you where I'm going with this.
Okay.
All right, I don't want to put up a wall where people who may be not wealthy investors, who don't buy 100 homes and pay everybody off so they can buy it all, now, I'm talking about a legitimate guy that comes in, and he says, "You know, I make a little income here, it's better than to put my money in the bank, and so I buy this home, and as I go, I start putting things in, all right? And they may be perfectly good, excepting is that it may not be the style I want in that, so we're not encouraging somebody to bring a house up to speed. If there's a chip there, we'll say, "Well, you know, I'm not gonna pay 15 bucks, I just got this sink, this sink, $99, that thing, I'm not gonna pay another 15 bucks, put in a new sink, I'll just let it stay, and people who rent it have to deal with it," you know what I mean? I mean, I'm just trying to figure out how we can keep housing value go up and not step in a way of people investing to bring it up. If the code says that the plumbing is XYZ, a two-inch pipe, or this, or this, gotta be cleaned up, if it is done the way the city's laws allow it to be done, and then they should be also paying, in other words, to put in a sink if they wanna make something better, I guess. Actually, we're penalizing somebody for upgrading the kitchen, upgrading a bathroom, because of it, I mean, we gotta itemize, I don't know, do you have to have a plan also what they're gonna do?
Not on an individual item like that, on something-
Well, like kitchen.
Yeah, no, even a kitchen. So, the cabinets don't require permits, the only thing that requires permits is the plumbing or any electrical dishwasher.
Dishwasher, the dishwasher, the sink.
Right, plumbing, plumbing issues, yeah, and electric.
And everything that is, everything that is done, I mean, everything that's gotta be done, it's gotta be itemized, and you, so you have, so you get a deal on $99 to buy a sink, now, you gotta say, "Well, that sink isn't $99, really, it's $114 bucks." Gotta give the city $15, because they're putting in a sink.
Yeah, the issue is, we're mandated by the state code to inspect those things, and so we charge a fee to look at them.
So, I'm not trying, I'm just trying to see a problem that we try to encourage people to buy a home that is vacant and to bring it up to a certain level, and you need the tools to encourage them to do that. And I wanna, don't wanna put something into play that is gonna discourage, and say, "You know, I don't have to do that in Farmington, I don't have to do that in Berkeley, so I'll go buy a home in Berkeley or somewhere else."
It's the same mandated code throughout, it's the same mandated code throughout the state, so in whatever city you're in, in the state of Michigan in the country, if you put in a sink, the building code says you must obtain a permit. It's not like they can go to Berkeley, or Farmington Hills, or Troy, and not pay that same fee, they'll be paying that same fee to put in a sink, to put in a dishwasher, to put in a, it's an equal playing field.
Well, if everything is the same everywhere, why aren't we already there? In other words, why aren't we in compliance with the ordinance? If everybody else is charging everything the same, why isn't there one manual out for everybody?
There's the building code, but there's not a fee structure for everybody, for the issue, it doesn't have the same fee structure.
Well, remember, it's based on what the costs are to render the service, so the costs could be different in different cities.
Because we can't make money.
Right.
We can recapture what it costs.
Right, so maybe the wages, the benefit structures are different, so that's the whole point of the fee structure is to compensate.
Potable paint tank, residential, they barbecue, that's a potable tank?
No, that would be for an emergency generator, these large pigs, they call them, they're large tubes.
So, residential zoning permits includes one inspection? It says residential zoning includes-
You see them in rural areas.
Fences, accessory structures, under 200 square feet, sheds, generators, and potable tanks.
16, they're six to 10-foot-long tanks?
No, I don't have a big potable, but I'm just saying-
Not your barbecue tank.
No.
There's no other way really to define-
I'm trying to see about a potable tank, it's still dangerous, right?
Are these fees consistent with other fee in our metropolitan area?
Oh, yes, most definitely.
Okay. Let's just make sure that you're on the list to talk before you butt in. Okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. You done that?
Anyway, I just raised my concerns, and I know that we're trying to cover bases legitimately, but I'm just saying is that, that, you know, if you look at Southfield and look at the census tract and see what people take home in Southfield, you're not gonna get people doing much because they haven't got much.
Yeah.
And-
But we still have to recover our, we really still have to recover our expenses. We're allowed to recover our expenses.
Well, you know, a house goes down, because of ill-repair, the value goes down, you're losing money back to the backend too, you know?
Mr. Bader?
Well, I just wanna say with my own experience, I'm not a contractor. I took shop in high school for three years, I know a few things, I've always taken care of my own house, but I purchased two vacant homes in the city, and it was very helpful to me to have the building department, I paid the fee, every fee I was asked to pay, I paid the fee, but they gave me a list, and that was really helpful of, to guide me through making sure that I followed the code, but also that I was doing the right thing and that it was safe. And yes, some of the things I thought were a little picky on the list, you know, to be honest, but I did this twice, and yeah, I paid $15 for a cracked sink, a toilet, I forgot what I paid on that one, it was, the house hadn't been weatherized, so everything was cracked. But, you know, honestly, I appreciated the service, that I knew that these were experienced people that were coming out, and I hadn't done this before, and it was about rescuing two houses in the neighborhood that honestly were bugging me because they were in such disrepair and they'd been vacant for so long. Dan asked my question, "Are fees are comparable with other cities?" I just had, and I read it here, so I think, I just wanted, I guess, verification from you guys. One of the issues that we had a year or two ago was with generators. We were charging one fee, and it was for any size, fits all, and it was a lot of money. And some people just get small generators, so I think I read this correct, you've now differentiated-
From the size of the generator.
About the size, because I remember a couple of people coming and saying, "Jeez, I'm just putting in a little generator, and I'm gonna pay 750 bucks," or whatever it was. So, no, I appreciate that.
We've refined those.
Yeah, we've refined it. And then, also, if I'm reading this right, not every fee increased.
Correct, no, I did not.
No, because I'm looking at what's crossed out, what's now involved, and it looked like a number of them stayed.
They were, yeah, a lot of them stayed the same, a lot of them were added to fill in the gaps where we were going out and not getting compensated for.
I guess the other final thing I'd say is that I have seen landlords do just the opposite, they've taken over a house, maybe they slapped some paint on it and put people in it. I've seen that a number of times, so I know where you're trying to go, and you know how I feel about rent landlords that are not doing the right thing by our community. So, if, you know, if you're gonna have a rental house, it's part of the cost of doing business, and you make it up in your rent, as far as I'm concerned. That's it.
Ben O'Turney? Did you have your-
No.
Oh, I saw you-
No, sorry.
Okay, now, Mr. Graywell, do you have any?
I'm done, I asked my question.
Oh, okay. Mr. Fregasi?
There's a hotel, well-known hotel, four, five-star hotel, completely redoing everything in his building. Now, how does, how do, how do we, our building department, evaluate all the rooms in that large hotel as to, probably redoing every bathroom, every fixture, everything, excepting for, I guess, they're gonna send the furniture out to be upholstered, whatever, but how are we dealing with that? And is that, is that discouraging some of the least, or the smaller hotels from replacing things they say age?
No, on a large-scale hotels, high rises or something like that, if they're renovating, the permits are per floor, so they will itemize everything, 15 toilets, 15 sinks, et cetera, and for an inspector to go out on a full-floor inspection for plumbing on a rough, on something large like that, he may be there four hours, five hours. I know on the residentials that we just built on 12 Mile and Southfield, every single one of those units, the inspector was out there for one day doing a rough inspection on the plumbing system. So, you're taking one inspector out of the field for, you know, six or seven hours. Those fees are paid for the time. On commercial, it's much more complex because there's a lot of issues beyond the plumbing that have to be looked at, along with the plumbing inspector looking at things, there's separation requirements, there's fire stopping that has to be addressed by the plumbing inspector, there's penetrations that need to be looked at, and there's tempering valves that need to be looked at, so there's a lot of work involved in looking at these commercial systems.
And then you do that, and what, most cities do, the city?
Yes.
Per floor?
Per floor.
Do they have to have a plan submitted?
It depends on what they're doing. If they're not changing anything structurally, and they're not changing any walls or anything, they may only need a plumbing permit and an electrical permit, they may not need a building permit. It depends, if they start reconfiguring the suites to make them larger and or smaller, then yes, they would need a building permit.
I just trying to figure it out, because, you know, I was in an Opcut building the other day, I think it was with Shelley's, you know?
Yeah.
You know, the house lived in Mexico, and if they had to bring that thing up to code, they'd tear the building down, I mean, with these kinds of fees. I mean, everything and anything that was either old or plumbing, and in a flood case, you'd have to replace all the lead piping, correct? And a plumbing, any of your plumbing inspection?
Not necessarily.
Do you check, how do you check to see if there's lead?
We wouldn't check to see, they would have to be an independent agency to check to see if there's lead.
Is that a requirement?
Is it a requirement? No, it is not a requirement.
All right.
Mr. Madam?
Looking at, again, the fees, apartment registrations are obviously different chapter, chapter 105, is this a new fee?
Apartment registrations have been in effect for quite some time. We just came up with a fee structure for it because there is a lot of labor-intensive work clerical-wise to get the information. Years back, we sent out letters to department complexes to register, not one responded. So, there's a lot of follow-up in paperwork and mailing and calls to get them to register.
So, this registration fee annually, is that for, that doesn't matter how much, or is that for an apartment? that for an apartment?
The whole complex.
Oh, complex.
The entire complex.
I was going to say that. That'd be an expensive.
Not for a complex, the entire complex.
All right. The, the other question I have, I may be opening up a new, should be kind of worms. Now that, now you have, you know, the apartment sharing here, B and B, does that go into effect because now you have people who are going away for a week or something and renting up their apartment or their home? Do they then fall into a category of a rental home or apartment?
And an apartment, no. Not in an apartment, that wouldn't be a rental.
What about a home?
A home?
Or someone, let's say, is renting a room?
If they, that's addressed in the rental ordinance. If a person lives in the house and rents a room, it's not considered a rental.
So, if it's owner occupied?
It's owner occupied and homesteaded.
So, if someone is going on vacation and?
And somebody wants to stay to watch a house for a couple of months if they're going overseas or something, okay, it's not an issue. It's still a homesteaded property. Still has the original, you know, the original owner may not be in it at that particular time, but some, you know, he's not. You house-sitting or, you know, okay, you say, somebody, can you watch a house, you know, or I'm going to rent it for two months, just they have somebody in it, but it's still homesteaded, that's not what we're looking for.
Okay.
Okay? Mr. Zorn?
Yeah, I want to remind council that first and foremost, this is about public safety, protecting our, our, our commercial and our housing stock with these fees. A lot of the conversation, when we look at the rates, our, our rate structures is meant to recoup what our costs are. The state statute says we do not have to subsidize this, we can operate it almost as over a separate cost center. We cannot make more than ten percent. I went through an audit with another community back in 2006, a very enlightening, enlightening process. Council should recognize that, you know, prior to the great recession, you had too electrical, too plumbing, too mechanical. Today, you're operating a much leaner structure and this costs, this structure is designed to reimburse that leaner structure. As we saw in last Friday's budget presentation, we're currently in the process of adding, have either the two new people started with electrical or in the next few weeks?
Like, counter clerk started today.
Counter clerk has started.
And then the electrical inspector at the end of the month.
Right, and then we've got another two positions that will join the department. So this is all meant at recouping the cost of that or not the barbie basement, but I will say there are communities that have no full-time staff, a part-time clerk, so their basis of what they're trying to recoup is obviously much less. Our compensation model is fair in what we're paying for our, our, our people in our building trade. I think we're kind of clustered right in that middle and when I saw the list of communities, I felt pretty good. I want to just comment about housing in general. You know, we worked on over fifty NSP homes and some of the work we saw, in my mind, it really drove the need to have a vacant property registration ordinance and a rental property ordinance. We saw some incredibly poor electrical work, plumbing stuff that you guys, I think the best thing we did on every one of those homes is when we had the building department come in and generate lists, some of the lists were as much as ten, twelve pages long of things that needed to be done in these homes. Now, that was invaluable to prescribing and just defining the scope of work. One out of every 3.85 homes was hit by foreclosure. In 2010, 11, when we put these ordinances in place, I think it was a positive move. To date, we don't have anything that deals with multifamily rentals nor point-of-sale. And when you start looking at our housing stock turning fifteen, sixteen years old, if we went out and surveyed communities by the age of their housing stock, you probably see two other points of inspection and that may be something for a, a, a future date. Our objective in this exercise is to get this as a, as a cost center, to be self-supported. And I really do believe that all of this is about preserving that housing in that commercial stock. You know, we saw some things in the energy code too that I think are real important and I'll remind you, a few years ago, you put in, in place a PACE program designed to encourage the private sector to upgrade some of their mechanical systems. Our, our stock is aging and I think this is a good way to safeguard it.
Yeah, but, you know, Mr. Chairman, Fred, we had a power company that had illegal wiring in it, you know, I mean, I mean.
Very concerning.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, but I mean, I'm just trying to say, you know, we don't pick on the big guy and yet the little guy.
Give us a chance.
Well, how long have they been sitting in that office until you, they sold it, you didn't even, no matter if it was up for sale, we didn't even know all his lack of.
But that's one of the strengths of the vacant property registration ordinance, it is both commercial and residential.
What is, what is considered a space heater? If you plug in a meter in the room?
No, 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 no.
But. A space heater is considered a permanently mounted device, so let's say, for instance, in a room, you don't, your, your existing heating system doesn't have ductwork out to that room. This is a permanently mounted, it's not a plug-in space heater.
They're wall units that have gas connected to them.
Just a quick comment to underscore, Mr. Zorn has said, one of the vacant houses I took over, a bunch of the wiring was done with extension cords.
Yeah, but.
And obviously somebody didn't pull a permit on that.
But there wasn't very good inspection.
But the point I'm trying to make is that people who, who can't afford to pay a permit will do such a thing and she'll.
Then they're down, they probably shouldn't have the house.
I mean, people have money, they go ahead and they put.
They shouldn't have the house then.
What?
They shouldn't have the house then.
Well, a lot of them are losing, there'll be four hundred of them in the city.
And we're down.
And they're not, and they're not picking them up. They're not picking them up. Every time, you get one down, two come up.
Okay.
I mean, how many are you getting from the, from the Treasury of Oakland County? How much under this new program?
We have a total of four hundred right now. We used to have twelve hundred, I think it was.
We get sixteen.
Sixteen hundred.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. So, we're making headway. Uh, I have a couple of questions. One is, when you have a large-scale remodeling and you talk about like hotels, you do it by floor, and, you know, the developer or the contractor comes in and says, I have this many things to do. Have you considered that for either a rental home or an individual that's going to remodel their home, that they come in and say, I'm going to do this and this and this and this and this and this? And rather than say fifteen, twenty, you know, kachum, 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 have like a master thing? You can either do it one at a time or for, you know, eight hundred dollars, we'll give you a permit and you do it all.
Well, we actually did that in the past and we lost a tremendous amount of money.
Well, what you have to do is over a period of time, you have to, to see what people do when they completely remodel a home and keep track of that and then base your fees on that. You just can't, you know, throw a dart at a dartboard and say, here's what we're going to charge you.
But. On a, on a mechanical permit fee, if the cost is two hundred dollars, I'm going to tell you that our inspectors go out there at least four times on a residential permit for two hundred dollars. That's fifty dollars an inspection. Normally, we would only go out two times, maybe three, but when it's a resident, we give them the benefit of the doubt and go out until we utilize all those monies that the fees were paid for. If it, I mean, we've had some, the one we had was, how many times were we out there? Thirty-five times, thirty-five times for a fifty-dollar permit. And so, we didn't have the tools to, to assess the additional fees and we're, we're trying to work towards making ourselves self-sufficient and I, I think we're very fair with the residents. When they come in, we, we bend back, bend over backwards to get them on the right track.
Okay. And this is not my second question, I'm, I'm going to ask the second question, I'm going to make a statement first. One of the things we're talking about is to have the inspectors go out and make sure that the work is done right. And if you recall, we sat at this table in the middle of the winter when next-door neighbor had sent a text or either text or an email in that their neighbors' sump pump wasn't, was pumping stuff out in the backyard and it was coming over and got out there and found out it wasn't, wasn't wired right, wasn't, wasn't piped right, you know, it was doing what it wasn't supposed to be doing. So, it's to prevent things like this from happening to, to do it right. Now, my question is, and it's, it's tied to this, but it's a little different. In the past year, we've gone through the building department because people have had bonds put up, waiting for a CVO and they either didn't come in to get the final CVO or whatever, but we had a ton of bonds that were, that we had to go through, find out if we could either charge them, give them money back or whatever, so it was well over a million dollars. My question is, do we have a process now that will, that won't, we won't have to go through that again?
Yes. If the process is implemented after a certain amount of time, we'll go back three years, we'll look at the status of the job. A lot of jobs are still ongoing after three years. If they're still ongoing, those get moved to a, a different portion of, of the permit system, but anything that is, has no activity, after three years, we make contact and with the contractors, if there's no response, those permits get closed out and the bonds get forfeited.
But what, I mean, there's, then at least a few more questions.
But that's, that's not exactly right.
Okay. I hope not.
Invalid permits are defined now in the ordinance. If you have no activity and you, and you haven't, you know, called for inspections or you haven't corrected within a hundred and eighty days, we have the right to forfeit them.
And that's the next position we're adding to better enforcement.
Right.
On those outstanding issues.
But forfeiting the bond doesn't fix the problem.
No, 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 we still have enforcement action, but at least we're not going to have these bonds hanging there for twenty years like we have because they're forfeited, they become the city's money for the expense of going through, but absolutely, we still have enforcement.
Yes, we have.
I, I agree. You don't, you don't want to say, oh, we'll forfeit the bond and now we just assume and let you go.
Yeah.
But that's why we're putting the enforcement person in there, so we'll have a body who can go through that tickler and this needs to be completed and if they, unfortunately, when they have to take, we go after them.
Right. They'll be ticketed or if they, if they fail to respond, they should be ticketed and we'll, and we'll get them into court and that's, that's how we would resolve it.
Yeah, I think we, you know, I hope we've closed that loop because there are folks that get a temporary CVO and they go into business and their promise is, yeah, I'm going to rewire the sump pump so it does what it's supposed to do, or re-pipe the sump pump so it's going into the, into the sewer instead of into the.
Right.
The backyard. But somebody's got to follow up on that to make sure that it does happen and, you know, somebody just, you know, we have a clerical person that pulls the, the paperwork and it's three years and the, the bond hasn't been exercised, then we forfeit the bond and.
No, we, we chase them down to get some action.
And if you remember, part of this whole technology upgrades are that we have much better tracking now with the permitting system we have, so when that doesn't happen, the system's going to come back at that period of time and it's going to remind us that, hey, nothing's gone on at this period of time, you need to check into this again. So it'll actually generate another inspection and tell us, you better pay attention to what's going on, this is going on. So that's part of the technology and, and the changes in the technology that we've been putting forward, so.
Okay, so I, because we may not be here, you may not be here.
Correct.
The system triggers us, the system.
And what happens if that business person sells his business and it's, and he still hasn't got a CVO?
Then conceivably, the next person who comes in would have to obtain a CVO and unfortunately, they would be liable for what's previously not done if.
Would they know about it?
A lot of times, we'll advise the contractor and the developer or the owner of the property that those persons go out in conjunction.
Because the minute they, the, the new person comes in, the new owner comes in to do anything or to even change ownership, we click on that in the computer, it keeps all the records and they never go away, so we'll be able to see, oh, this never had a CVO and here were the issues. Anybody can see that. So, it's not dependent on a specific person still being in the building department that remembers that. You click on it for that property and it'll show you everything that's gone on in that property.
Okay, I don't want to drag this out much longer, but I have to understand what you just said and let me give you an example. A barber decides he's going to open up a barber shop and he does everything that he's supposed to do except one thing. So he can't get a.
CVO.
CVO. So he, he's busy cutting hair and doing whatever he's supposed to do and he decides, you know, I really didn't like, you know, barber in the first place, so I'm going to sell it to someone else. Now, the next barber that takes over doesn't have to do anything because it's a functional barber shop, but we, but you and I know that there's one thing left to do that doesn't bring it up to code. But it seems to be functional as far as the new barber's concerned. Now, how is he going to know that he needs to do something and how do you know that there's a new barber in there that needs to do something in order to bring that up to?
We don't know that a new, we may not know that a new barber came in there, but after a hundred and eighty days, when that CVO triggers, we'll go out and if it's a new person, we, you know, we'll explain to them what the issue is and that the business is operating without the certificate of occupancy and we'll have to take enforcement action on the new owner if it's a minor item. Normally, and this has occurred, a lot of times, they'll just say, okay, I'll get my electrician in to fix it, it's done and over. It usually happens to our advantage.
Okay, all right.
The other thing on that is when you're buying a business to get your financing, your lender requires due diligence and one of your due diligence is you have to, you have to contact various city entities and get those letters, so you'd have to have something from the building department that everything's up and the zoning, so, so that's a function too of a check that you know what you're getting into through your due diligence.
Okay. All right. This will go on our, for the 23rd?
We can move the pages. We can move the pages and I want to just thank Louie Go and Mark and his team for all the effort going into this, this is.
Yeah, I know this is a huge, time-consuming thing, but it has to be done periodically. So, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. That's the correct one.
Next item on our agenda is authorization to relocate Southfield Michigan Works.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, I'm a clerk, I'm a board. The Southfield Michigan Works Office is seeking permission for the city to enter into negotiations with Lawrence Technological University to relocate our Michigan Works Office to what's currently called the Merks Plaza, but will be called the Enterprise Center. So we're seeking authorization to negotiate a lease with Lawrence Tech. As you know, we've been working on this relocation plan for quite some time. The city of Southfield has one of the higher unemployment rates in Oakland County at 5.8 percent, the county is at 4.1 percent. Our current location is in the John Gray Center, which is also a facility that is in dire need of extra assistance. By relocating our facility, our plan is that we will position our Michigan Works Office to be in a more transit-friendly location and it'll be tied to other resources that will be offered from Lawrence Technological University in our soon-to-be-open incubator accelerator space. This will also give the city an opportunity to reposition the John Gray Center to provide either housing or some other type of services at its current location. The city has worked with our purchasing. The city has worked with our purchasing department to go out for bid as required by the state and federal statutes. February 24th, we received two bids, or we went out for bid, and on March 16th, we received two proposals. One of them was from Lawrence Tech, and the other one was from R E L Properties. The Lawrence Tech bid came in at $11.50, and that includes the maintenance camp costs. Currently, the Southfield Michigan Works pays $58,000 yearly in rent. This new lease, we will see an increase in rent up to $64,000. However, after talking with the Michigan Works Department, we feel that we can adequately cover the expenses of this increase. However, we will negotiate and have spoken with Lawrence Tech currently that if for some reason the grant were to go away 100%, that we would be able to end our lease amicably. As well, if there was a significant reduction in our grant allocation, that we would be able to reduce the amount of space that we plan on leasing from Lawrence Tech. So that'll give us the safeguard to make sure that we can still operate our services. It should be noted that over the 30 years, and with the various increases and reductions that Michigan Works Office has received, Michigan Works has not defaulted in our payments to the city at any time. There has been ebbs and flows in the amount of money that they've received, but they were able to make adjustments to their staff and their expenses in order to accommodate their expenses. Let's see. We have spoke with Oakland County Michigan Works. They did notify us, not in writing, but we had discussions with them that they will assist us with some of our one-time moving costs in order to assist us to relocate into the new facility. As well, we've made arrangements with the code enforcement. We feel that at the time that we're moving will approximately be six months from now, and code enforcement has some extra staff, and they'll be able to assist us with the physical move of our furniture. Technology Services has agreed to assist us with the city staff technology that might be required to be relocated. As well, we have staff internally that handles the public technology, and they'll handle that move. So we feel that we're in good shape to take on this relocation. Another reason that we've discussed relocating the facility is, again, you know, we're always worried that the funding is going to be reduced through the Michigan Works facilities. And we feel that if we put our space in a better position, that we can withstand any large-scale modifications that the state might bring to, or Oakland County might bring to the area. So we want to make sure that our services provide the best services to the region. Currently, we service several surrounding large communities. And by connecting us with the Michigan Works, with Lawrence Tech and the incubator, they're going to be offering workforce development training at a higher scale, robotic education and other computer skills. So we feel that if we can get our clients to come into a better setting, that it might encourage them to take classes that they might have hesitated at looking at currently. And so this might give them some better opportunities for advancement.
Mr. Mayor?
I know that rent increases may sound like an issue, and I don't know the answer to this, but I just suspect that the cost of operating John Gray exceeded $58,000. Parks and Rec has been subsidizing that. It's just under $200,000 a year. Parks and Rec has been subsidizing that. We've looked at other, we're currently in a dialogue with a group that may be interested in taking the John Gray. The other thing on our rental rate, that rental rate was reduced because we owned the building, and we had federal grants tied to it, which lowered our rental rate. Back in 2010, when I first started here, Mr. Schreit had me interact with the state audits. But Troy's paying a $17, $18 a month rent, and we had lots of questions. But the reason that we couldn't take our rent to a fair market rent is we owned the building, and we had other federal dollars that were utilized to renovate that building.
And we still couldn't make money. Except if we were subsidizing with Parks and Rec money, we're really losing money on it.
They were only paying for the space they were using, the entire second floor. The building has accessibility issues. Until the last year, lots of complaints about the air quality and other issues were frequent. Surprisingly, those have been very quiet recently.
We believe that the better setting will make everyone feel more upbeat about even coming into work in general for the staff, but also for our guests that come.
A year ago, when we ran this by the Michigan Work Force people, as well as the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, they love the ideas of all the synergies happening. And if you look at a lot of, well, we talked about place, transit, pedestrian design and that, this really will strengthen Southfield as an entrepreneurial city, a community offering greater support, not just for that business startup, the partners that accelerate our automation alley, the Michigan Business Development Center. You'll have people from entry level to people who are trying to get their business to that second and third stage.
Mr. Mayor, you have any other questions?
No, that was it. I just wanted to point that out because I didn't have the exact dollar, but I knew there was a lot more money going on down there at that $58,000.
Mr. Manamov?
I was going to make the same observation, but the mayor made that probably more of a good end. Another question that I have is, how will we be letting people know that easily?
Well, cable, first of all, has started a new program where they come out and they'll do like two-minute discussions, so more pointed topic. And they have their news program. So that's one way that we'll be communicating better with our residents. Also, the Southfield Area Chamber of Commerce is going to be engaging with another organization that's going to be offering web TV for their cable, for guests that come to the Southfield Chamber. So we'll be using that as another means to advertise the facility. But the services are currently offered through the unemployment centers and that type of thing, so that will go out to the general public automatically. But we'll utilize all of our social media. We've been very active in posting job positions and that type of thing through social media, through Twitter and Facebook and those sorts of means, as well as obviously the city's website and our regular communications.
Mr. Castle?
Fred, how are we going to secure that building?
John Gray? Let us get through, we will work to secure it, but that'll be the next step. I'm honestly, we'll have to figure out how we secure it.
It'll be unattended by any group.
Right. But there is discussion about moving it sooner with a possible going through a tax credit program this October, 2016.
Do it favor of the move. I'm just concerned about in that neighborhood that we're starting to have some problems.
Any other questions? Okay, I have a question. How many communities do we serve through our Michigan Works?
Well, I believe that people can go to any facility. Southfield Services, Farmington Hills, and maybe West Bloomfield, pretty much anyone in the region. So there's one in Oak Park, there's a facility in Noby. Really, people go anywhere, so I think there's eight of them throughout the county. But our primary groups are Farmington Hills and West Bloomfield.
The reason I ask that question is, you were talking about the media, and the question was, how are they going to know that it's moved? And almost all of the things that I heard you talk about are pretty much limited to Southfield. Now, Twitter and all that, I think that's sort of a hit-and-miss kind of a thing.
Well, we're definitely connected to Oakland County, and so when guests sign up through the Michigan Talent Bank, they're assigned to people automatically and assigned to offices. So we're connected that way to the guests that need assistance. As well, when we go out on business calls, we'll have all that new information. So we make appointments. So currently, when I go out on a retention or an attraction visit, I'll refer them to the Michigan Works office, and they'll come out on a follow-up appointment. And the same thing happens with Oakland County and the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. So depending on where the business is located, the appropriate staff person from Oakland County Michigan Works will go out. So that's our reach to the business community. In terms of all the other residents that are in the area, again, you know, and obviously we'll use local newspapers and Oakland County resources to get the word out. But anyone who signs up for unemployment services is directed automatically to an office. So there'll be an immediate connection for them.
All right. We'll see this on the 23rd.
Great, thank you very much.
Actually, the next thing on our agenda is a continuation of the budget discussion. But before I get to that, we had a resolution that came from Oakland County about the law enforcement. The only comment that came so late, it was this week. I don't know if, did they get...
Oh, yes, it was, yes, by, yes, yeah, it was signed by all the commissioners.
Yes.
Yes.
But this week, I don't know what we can do with it to make any, be effective. We are going to have a law enforcement program for the fallen officers. So, I don't know. I just want to bring it to the council in case anybody had a better idea than I did because the week has already started.
Yeah, I seen that too, and I just was surprised because, you know, that, when they send those things in, we don't get a thing, our package till Friday.
Yeah.
And so it's hard to get anybody together, even to see who's listening tonight.
Yeah.
To have a thing. But I think your point is well-taken, if we have a memorial thing that we honor, you know, at the same time, or blend it in with something that we're doing.
Right. Okay?
The other thing, Mr. Chairman, is on the agenda...
Yes.
This budget discussion, I believe, is very, very important. Not that communications aren't, but I'd like to move the communications so that we can just focus on the budget.
I was wondering if somebody's going to bring it up, or if I had to bring it up myself.
I was going to suggest it, but I already had my hand slapped once tonight, so.
Yeah, that seems reasonable that we, because the budget, we don't know how long the budget negotiates, or not budget negotiates, but the budget conversations last. So with no objections, I will move the communications portion of the agenda to the next, and then save the communication of the budget, or the continuation of the budget discussion for later. Our first person to ask for recognition is Pamela Gerald. If you'll come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Pamela Gerald, P O Box 150, by Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. Most of you were sitting at this table at the Friday C O W that was called when our city planner, Terry Crowe, got up, and he spoke from his heart. This gentleman almost brought me to tears. And what he basically said, he echoed everything that I've been saying to you guys since the visioning session about the fact that the departments are short in numbers. You guys have dealt with the budget crisis via attrition and not doing a lot of things that you should do, like fulfilling those positions, but more importantly, fairly compensating people for what they're doing around the city. Through the chair, I remember you, Mr. Zorn, talking about you gave your wife's friend, Shelley Friedman, a raise and a position increase. And your justification was that you went around to the various communities looking at what a economic development manager made, but you bumped her up to a director. And most cities don't have economic development directors. They only have managers. But those people in those positions, they have employees working for them. Shelley is so unique because she's a one-woman department with all the big titles. But what you failed to do in your efforts to make Shelley whole, you failed to see in surrounding communities what city planners made. And he basically told you, Mr. Crowe, that he felt he was underpaid for what he does and all the extra responsibility that's been put on him. Now, it's not to say that you should attempt to harass him or make his life miserable because he called out what he felt, but I admire the council president because he said, it's time that we sit down and talk. And Mr. Frazier, I know that you and I, for many years, didn't see eye to eye, and we went as far as bumping heads, but you really impressed me with just the acknowledgement of what this gentleman was saying in his heartfelt words. So I'm going to encourage you, Mr. Frazier, to go department to department, talk to the employees, allow them to express what they're feeling, like Terry Crowe said, and you'll see that maybe Mr. Zorn is missing the mark. Maybe me talking about his friends and family plan is more valid than you guys had given me credit for. But Shelley is definitely the number-one member of Fred Zorn's Friends and Family Plan. Settle the contracts.
Time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next person to ask for recognition is Mr. Gerard Mullin. And if you come to the microphone, your time starts.
Gerard Mullin, Post Office, Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. Tonight, I'd like to talk about Evergreen Boulevard, that is, that section of Evergreen Road that is located between Ten Mile and I-696. To be more precise, that section of the Boulevard that fronts the Southfield Municipal Complex. But first, I'd like to thank again this council for the upgrade of Evergreen Road, which is enhancing this complex's curb appeal by eliminating the standing water and the associated potholes on the road. Council spent millions of dollars on Evergreen Road, in part to enhance the curb appeal of City Hall. But sad to say, council has concurrently neglected the facade of City Hall, thus reducing the curb appeal of City Hall. For example, the city logo on top of City Hall's front door entrance is an eyesore, tarnished and green. The metal staircase handrails outside of the front door of City Hall are chipped and are rusting out, leaving a poor impression on visitors to City Hall. In spite of my nitpicking, Southfield City Hall's curb appeal is still number one with me, but for a few more dollars, could be improved from an A to an A+. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person that is asked for recognition, Mr. Fred Bunker. Go to the microphone, give your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Fred Bunker, 24201, Southfield, Michigan. I've come to, I've heard that someone from the planning department would be here. We've got a house that was purchased quite a while ago by Matt Sutrow, Mr. Freeman. And I saw in the past couple days, somebody had posted a demand to register this vacant house next door that Mr. Crowe had told me in 2011 was slated for demolition. this vacant house next door that Mr. Crowe had told me in 2011 was slated for demolition. I was hoping to find out from the city attorney if the house has no utilities to it. It's for five years now. No electricity, the wires were cut, they lay in the bushes. Now, the company, a tax abatement recipient who's bought residential property as the council approved in a consent agenda, seemingly in time for Maxitrall to now register the property as a tax abatement recipient? And they didn't do this at the time they purchased the property? Why did Lear have to get a vote of council to buy residential property before they, as tax abatement recipients, made the decision before they went bankrupt? Like every tax abatement recipient who's ever bought residential property. Aerosmith, across the street from me, was the first, $9 million in debt, baked into it. The property on the corner of Telegraph, Mr. Frazier knows, 19 years, three acres. Could have been a school parking lot, could have been a school right-of-way. We had to call the DEQ to show them pictures of them washing buses on my street. This vacant house is covered in asbestos, like the Coed House. These houses have to be gotten rid of. Asbestos is not a good thing, Mr. Health and Welfare of the Residents Mayor, who was quoted last week, the same council member who voted to put a traffic light halfway across Telegraph for this pre-K through 12 school. There's, there's things you can see beyond, and putting a traffic light halfway between here and Burger King is not going to stop children from crossing Telegraph. And in your absence, Mayor, a child was run hit. And I don't think it's a first case. This neighborhood has been turned over and over by Mr. Crowe. Excuse me, but my compliments for Mr. Crowe go back to 2005, when he allayed my fears and told me the house was slated for demolition. How does a house sit for five years, City Attorney Ward?
Your time's up.
After it's slated for demolition? Just one question I came to have answered.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Can I get an answer?
We typically don't answer it when somebody leaves a question and it's ready.
Can we be atypical?
Your time is up, thank you.
So I breathe asbestos, thank you.
The next person that's asked for recognition is Patrice Taylor.
Patrice Taylor, 25170 Thorngeike Street, Southfield, Michigan. Good evening, council, good evening, mayor. I am standing here to talk with you about our youth. Thirteen years ago, I came here. School system, safety, a sense of community, economic growth. Those were the things that I thought about when I brought my one-and-a-half-year-old son here. I thought to myself, I said, "Hey, those are the things that I want my son to focus on. That's how I want him to grow up. That's where I want him to grow up, in a city that focuses on those type of things." Let's fast forward 13 years later. He is now 14 years of age and he's a developing youth. Investing in our youth. Those are four words that I want this council and our mayor to think about. Investing in our youth. As a city council and a mayor, I want to ask you, what is it that you all think is happening in our city? How is it that you all think that you invest in our youth? I just ask that question. I don't want you all to just look at the Southfield school system. I want you all to look at you all selves. What is it that we all are doing to help our youth? It's not just the schools' responsibility. We have a school that's closing. We have one high school left. It's us as a community that needs to do something. We don't have a summer youth program. I've investigated. I investigate everything. I'm a social worker, a psychologist, and a counselor. That's what I do. Please, pay attention to these things. Because idle, idle time is idle minds. We need to do something. We need to get these businesses together and try to get them to commit to helping our youth. Because if we don't have our youth, we don't have a strong community. And we can do anything and talk about anything about our community, but if we don't have youth, we don't have a community. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person to ask for recognition is Mr. Richard Melton.
Hello, Richard Melton, 20850, Wink Street in Southfield. I want to address the new water consumption data transmitters placed every outside of our homes. Though technically not a smart meter, it shares the same concerns regarding health and privacy. It was found that its radio frequency RF signal is much stronger than DTE smart meter with large spikes of energy recorded directly in the home every 14 seconds, non-stop. How would people know about this? Even DTE offered the courtesy of a letter announcing their meter switch. Summarizing my recent email to council, there is considerable research evidence that continuous exposure to RF energy is implicated in numerous health issues. The World Health Organization lists RF as a Class 2B carcinogen. There was supporting sworn testimony from Dr. David Carpenter, M.D., Director of the Institute for Health and the Environment at the State University of New York, who recently came here to Michigan to testify before the Public Service Commission. And there were supporting videos that included the former president of Microsoft of Canada and with a description of wireless industry corruption and dishonesty, how lobbyists work to obstruct and manipulate scientific findings, much like Big Tobacco used to do. And Harvard University's report, whose title says it all, Captured Agency: How the Federal Communications Commission, the FCC, Is Dominated by the Industries That Presumably Regulates. This report is critically important because all legal justification for deploying RF and Wi-Fi devices is based on the FCC standards. But the current FCC standards use inappropriate criteria and have not been updated for decades before cell phones and Wi-Fi. The FCC should not be trusted any more than the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality, the DEQ. Also, in the email were brain scans showing how much deeper into the brain RF penetrates on a young child. So moving forward, what to do? Here are some considerations. One, seriously reduce the number of transmissions. Every 14 seconds seems outlandish for a water meter reading and smacks of surveillance. And also note that it's a felony to place a transmitter on a resident without permission. Two, have an opt-out program like that offered by Birmingham. Three, install a shielding enclosure so the RF does not radiate backwards into the house. DTE smart meter sits in a shielded box. That's a start. The city has fumbled the ball here. There are many who will be watching how this is handled. Don't be like the DEQ. Finally, the city needs a process that allows a dialogue to take place. Today is not a dialogue. This is not a customer-centric relationship. And I would ask through the chair, I did send all members of council an email.
Your time's up.
Um, I would like to know if I show of hands of the council members here today who received that had time to review it. Very good. I was very startled when I realized how strong that transmitter is.
Thank you.
And no response?
Well, people raised their hands, did receive it and... Do you want to take a five-minute break before we start the budget process?
Yes.
Okay. Our capable financial guru, Lynn. And we will continue on with Hope Reserved last Friday.
Okay, good evening, council.
Good evening.
I think we had a very good discussion on Friday. Today is day two of our budget presentation. And just to reiterate, I thank everyone here, but just so with the public launch and how we're going to work today. What we're going to do, our agenda for today is to review the budgets for the following groups or clusters. These clusters were defined by me. And not anything formal, just so me, I could put everything in a bucket and kind of have that relational discussion. So we'll talk through the grant funds, which will consist of Section 8, CDBG, as well as Michigan Works through the Career Center. We also have some donations and trusts, the trusted agency funds that we'll talk about. The internal service funds, which kind of operate under Public Works, but those will be our facilities management and our motor pool that provide services exclusively for the city. Public Works will include engineering, streets and highway, as well as water and sewer. Our administrative departments are quite a few, the name, Michael, and those, but those are kind of all the others that I haven't discussed. And then cultural recreation will include cable, library, and parks and recreation. Okay? The way, just the ground rules that we'll have is, council, if you have an item, the department, most of the department heads are here in the audience to be able to answer any questions. If there's something that we do not have the ability to respond to today, we'll put it in what I call the parking lot and we'll do our best to come back to make sure that those questions are answered in another meeting. Good, Mr. Chair? Okay? All right. So we're going to talk about the grant funds. Here's the budgets for, let me try to get this side, let me see. Here's the budgets for the four, what are the three? CDBG, Section 8, and Michigan Works. For the most part, the budgets have maintained or have remained relatively the same. If you recall, the CDBG activities were authorized through an annual action plan in April, actually last month. So we kind of talked through some of those activities. This just pretty much helps us solidify what the expenditures are going to be for that program. The Section 8 program is based on what we consider housing assistance, assisted payments, where people who are eligible receive a voucher to find housing either within the city of Southfield or outside of the city of Southfield. The city of Southfield is facilitating this program. And we also get some administrative costs that are based on the number of vouchers that we have leased up each month. I do recall, because I know this is going to be a question, so I'm going to just fill this right away. We did have some discussions earlier in the year about transitioning out of the Section 8 program. We are still continuing those discussions, but at this time, we are still responsible for managing this program. Michigan Works, we've been talking about them transitioning over to the Smart Zone. And what usually happens as we go through our budget process, Oakland County has not necessarily, usually at our budget time, has not solidified what that funding is or hasn't been finalized, I should say, has not been finalized yet. But we usually kind of, when we do make a projection, we're very concerned with those amounts are going to be, but usually we'll get it, hopefully, I mean, in the next month or so, within the next month, so we'll know what kind of funding level that we have. And usually what I would like to do is maybe come back through and do a true-up at some point of what the amount is that we're going to have budgeted for that program. Okay? Donations, memorials, and trusts has become an interesting topic over the last few weeks. And what we typically have done historically is we budgeted about $200,000 to cover things that we have, expenditures for items that we have in various trusts or donations that have been provided. That allows us to facilitate some of the activities that may be necessary. As you may recall, we ended up being able to purchase some of the flags that go on the Boulevard of Evergreen Road so that we'd be able to do that. Having a budget here allows us to do that. It still becomes, the transactions do will become before council if they require council approval.
Where's the money? The money is coming from donations, memorials, and trusts, for the flags? Is that what you're saying?
That was an example, but yes, there was a specific account that we found was, when we were given instructions to see if we could find some money to fund it because we didn't have a specific funding source to fund those, those flags. We were able to find an unrestricted source, brought that purchase before council for approval.
If you recall, last Friday, Council of the Causa, we had that trust and agency. Historically, there's roughly, there are 1.2 billion in that account. Historically, each year what we've done is we've budgeted $200,000 and when we have an expenditure to come out of that account, that covers us so that we can move it through administratively and not have to make that technical budget adjustment.
So the list of funds that we had...
Well, he's looking, may I ask a question on the topic?
Good.
Why would you only budget $200,000 when you know that the John Miller, Leon Miller fund is going to be capped at $300,000?
I think in this particular case, as we were preparing the budget, we did not have authorization to expend more of the trust and agency money. I didn't receive the direction from the administrator to go ahead and proceed with that.
So where's it coming from? So where's it, the $200,000 coming from?
It would be any one of the eligible activities. For example, if the police department, they have the teddy bear youth account. If they wanted to go out and purchase the teddy bears, we were charging at that point. And it would not, it would be, you know, $1,500 charged in that $200,000. If the Employee Spirit Committee has a balance of $10,453, if there was an expenditure we wanted to spend associated with that activity, we would charge that and that would become a part of that $200,000.
Yeah, there are both restricted and unrestricted funds. So if they're restricted, they'd have to be used for whatever the donor said that they had to be used for. The unrestricted, you can fit it, you can use it for whatever you think is appropriate.
You know, for example, we...
We don't follow that rule though.
Pardon?
We don't follow that rule.
I hope we do. I hope we don't sell, I hope we don't spend restricted funds for...
Leon Miller's fund was supposedly for children, part of the library.
That's not true. It is, it was for any, anything that the library board decided. That's, that was straight from Jack Barris's mouth, the trust. It, Lee Edith Phillips was just for children's. But the Leon Miller trust was for any library purpose that the library board chose. That's what, that's what Jack told us.
I got, I got a call from Mrs. Kennedy that she was part of the, part of the gift and so she made a comment...
Yeah, not, not for Leon Miller, she's mistaken.
Well, she knows Miller's, as I do.
That's library.
Well, I was, she, I was a library...
Okay.
But anyways, I'm not going to...
Oh, Lynn, and I know that the $200,000 is in, and I should read, the finance committee was taking a look at this, this whole list and we want to do something with it, but now, the $200,000, under that, they're administrative or administrative purposes. And what, are there, are there really any real-time money coming in, like, you know, somewhat donated to the city? We don't, there's no, were there any new donations last year? I'm, I'm just trying to get a feel for what potentially comes in on an annual basis.
Mr. Pierce?
Well, I can answer that question. For instance, the baseline fund, I gather, that's one of the funds. It's all donated money, but it continues to receive money and spend money.
Okay, so we, there, there, real money coming in for, for $10,000, $15,000 on annual basis?
Well, last year it trickled down because we pushed, but in the last year, a couple hundred dollars.
But that would be a designated fund.
Right, it's a designated fund with a purpose, but it wasn't tax dollars and it's in this, in this category.
Right, okay. Okay, so, but in essence, it's, it's difficult to budget for...
Right, absolutely, because you don't know what's going to happen.
Yeah, yeah, but I was just trying to figure what was there, a routine or something every year we can always...
No, we have typically done $200,000 and some years it's been $40,000.
That's real money?
In some years, yeah, where, I mean, we've had something come in. If there's a grant out there, sometimes we get a grant, somebody applies for a grant and it doesn't really fall into any normal category like police or fire, it would go into this fund. We would just put it in the fund because that's our grant fund. Oh, she's at the grant funds, but in the, the donation fund. So like, sort of like... So, like, sort of like, I have to go back to, um, the recent passing of the fire chief.
Right.
We had money come through there because we held a memorial, and they had things. So, we get these things sporadically, but it's almost impossible to say, oh, we're gonna get this much this year, we're gonna get this much that year. And one of the other reasons we didn't budget the money from the library was because that bill I was directed to send this year, and so, we were gonna anticipate doing that as a fourth quarter budget adjustment to this year, if we were gonna get the money. But if you want us to add it to next year's budget, we could very easily do that.
Well, it still could be done this year.
Okay. So that was really kind of the reason, is what, I've already sent an invoice, I'd sent an invoice a long time ago.
Just the paperwork has.
Right.
And your biggest pass-through, um, we also run donations, um, pertaining to the TOS program.
Right, that was the other thing, the other thing that was.
So you've got your smart municipal, and there's been some discussions administratively about taking the TOS program and its, uh, outside of this trust and agency relationship.
It was put there because at some point in time, somebody was concerned that we weren't spending enough of the TOS money, and it was just falling into the fund balance into the Parks and Recs. Somebody said, well, let's just move it over here. Well, quite frankly, I think it, what happens now is it's actually bad, so we're spending even a little bit more than what we're possibly getting coming through the fund. So, yeah, that's one of the things administratively that we may be moving out of the trust and back into the administrative department of Parks and Recs. But we'll probably bring that as a budget adjustment.
Is there any money left from the, uh, Southfield, the foundation? Or we spent all that money?
The other money went to the, uh, South, the Community Foundation of Southeastern Michigan, which recently made a grant of 12,500 for the, uh, baseline monument. I know there's another application submitted, where I submitted one for, uh, the public art fund for this year. But also coming from the Southfield Community Foundation, they were the entity holding the, uh, am I correct with this statement? That they were holding the money towards the Thompson Time House, or the Old Time Library, example, there's a hundred.
I think they did help, but they gave that back to us when they.
That was the 100,000.
Right, right, that was.
That was a hero.
That money did not go to the endowment of the Community Foundation, the, uh, Mary Thompson.
Are you talking about the Southeast Michigan Community Foundation?
Yeah, the one they merged with.
Yeah, 'cause when they were making that decision.
I thought we got bought out by them, and we bought them out.
That's what I thought, so, I thought so too.
We, we got.
We had a temporary, I know we had a temporary.
We got like a check for, I wouldn't say 40 to 50,000 dollars for different things, but some of the bigger things, I think they took. Some of the stuff, I think they still have.
Yeah, we got out of it, we, it was.
My understanding is there's still money, right? There, there's a Southfield.
We got out, we have no connection with that group at all anymore.
There is a Southfield Fund there.
Which group?
That.
Andrew Foundation of Southeast.
There are two, there were two, there's a Southfield Community Foundation, then there's a Southeast Michigan Community Foundation that they were considering putting their money in. But once it goes in there, it's like going into a black hole.
That's right.
You'll never get your money back.
That's why we made the determination that we weren't gonna put it in.
And that's right, we took the money out of the Southfield Foundation, put it in a temporary fund while we're making up our, our mind what we're gonna do with it. I guess I'm getting old, because I don't remember that we made the decision to move it into the.
It's probably on these lists.
Some of the money came back here.
Right, it came back to us.
Some of the money came back, and some went to the.
Okay.
And they, they have it, and, um, that's why I wrote a grant last year, I'm writing a, a grant this year.
Didn't they also have some money that came from the, the school foundation? Uh, Southfield Foundation, didn't, we merged the two of them?
That went back to.
Years and years, oh, they got theirs out?
The school took theirs back.
Okay, years ago.
Cook, Dr. Cook Robinson took.
Okay, because at one time, we merged the two of them.
Right.
And they have a, the, the schools have a foundation, it's not doing much, but they still have money.
Okay.
The Thompson investment entity has 276,144.36.
How much?
So, one of the tasks that were given to the finance committee on Friday was to go through and start looking at the, um, cash or the assets that are in the trust and agency funds, and then do a report back. So we're gonna progressively be working over the next couple of months, trying to, number one, identify which funds have activity and which ones do not, and which ones are dormant. Number two, trying our best to work towards finding out what the purpose is, looking through any documents or things that would, would come with that, so.
Yeah, let me, let me say this, and, and I said this Friday at the meeting, and, and I also just said it about Leon Miller. I was part of that, and Leon Miller wanted to make sure specifically where that money went to, was because he gave the land behind the farm to the school district to name the school after his wife's bed, and instead, they called it Leonard School, which was very upsetting for the family. So when we tried to buy the fund, it was a given that, that the name would be specifically for the wife, maiden name. And, and that's what we did. And also that he would live in the house until he passed away, and after that, house. But I'm trying to say is this, that, when I go through these funds, when people give money to the city for a specific purpose, I, I happened to find this, just fortunately, uh, going to work, have some of my junk. And, and George Blair was a developer here and a real estate guy. His wife passed away, and they gave money to the Parks and Recreation for a championship tennis thing, because he loved tennis, and would go to the women's all the time in England. And, and when he passed away, he gave the rest of it to pay for the sink. Well, what happened was that they spent the money on the courts that you presently see there, and we do not have, we do not have what the intent of his gift was. And, and we even had enough guts to say, when they had the memorial party out here, congratulations on the Southfield Tennis Court dedicated to his memory. And that was for a, a, dedicated for a tennis championship tournament field, or court. Uh, it said, uh, congratulations George Blair family and the City of Southfield on the dedication of its championship tennis court. Was never done. And, and, and so I watch these things, as people give money to the city, that, that, that if you're gonna continue to get funds given to the city, either, either you tell people that, you know, it will try to do what you, you wanted, but there should be an option, because sometimes over time, one doesn't have merit, and one does. And so, and so I, I went through that list, and like I said, I don't, uh, I'm very cautious of how we spend money that was given to the city as a gift for a specific purpose. And so, I just make that point, that, that, I guess, I shouldn't have been around as long as I have, to follow up on these gifts that give to the city for certain purposes, and we, and we did do it. So, when it says Friday, when we were going through that, I wanna make sure that, that these gifts that were given to the city had at least looked at from the pursuit that there was a, a secondary purpose in the grant to, to use it for some other purpose.
I don't know how much he gave, but it could very well be that it wasn't adequate to build a championship, uh, tennis court, but they, I, but I do know that they put the money into the tennis courts.
I was there at the dedication.
Yeah, so.
But, you know, like I said, I know what it put in.
Yeah.
And George went on a planning commission, and.
Yeah, I know George, I knew George.
He was a good friend, and I follow these people who give money to the city, and, you know, back then, I guess everybody really wanted the city go with, uh, by, by their donations, you know, and, and I wanted it to continue, because it's really a big income to the city to, to get these donations.
And it will continue if, as long as people put the city as part of their estate, so when they pass on, uh, we'll, we'll be getting those things in the future. So, we do have to make sure that we put them in the right bucket, so that, uh, yeah, we try to honor what the people want to put. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, okay.
Get pumpkin time.
So the next, right.
Give me more hours.
So the next, um, section is gonna be the internal service funds for facilities maintenance, um, and actually, what internal service funds, sometimes I use these technical accounting terms, but, uh, what it means is that, um, they provide services exclusively for the City of Southfield, and then they charge departments for those services. For, so for us to occupy, you know, buildings, use of facilities, to pay the lights and gas, we, as departments, have to pay charges to them. Same thing for motor pool, those departments that have vehicles assigned to them, um, there, there will be charges there, um, from each department as well. Okay? For facilities, I'm gonna do a quick little rundown. Um, for the most, there was, um, a reduction of about 1.1 million dollars. Um, we had a little bit of an increase in, um, janitorial supplies, but the big reason why that, uh, there was a reduction was we had more of a contingency established last year, um, to set aside for, um, some, um, capital improvements, whereas we didn't necessarily, um, do that, um, in 2017. And one of the big reasons that we had was we have kind of a, a lineup of a lot of facility projects lined up to happen that still we haven't really spent money for. So they're technically our funds established and set aside, um, to do that, and I'll let John maybe, um, do, uh, talk a little bit more about that upfront. Um, but so we really did not establish anything new money. We have old money set aside for capital improvements that was set aside in, during the budget process through the year, but nothing new above and beyond that to be included in, in the budget. Um, and so, uh, one of the things I believe we were able to do is, um, kind of reduce, uh, some of the draw from fund balances.
Lynn?
Mr. Cacass, go ahead.
Under the facility management, under the expenditures in this budget?
Yes.
Supplies, we just approved, council just approved 50,000 dollars for, for janitorial supplies, maintenance supplies. And then here operating supplies are, uh, 2017 and 8,000 dollars, 8,500. Is that correct, actual?
Was that 17, you say?
I don't have a page number.
No, no, you said it's 2017?
What's that?
You said the 2000, did you say 2017? It was 2, it was whatever the, the dollar amount you just said? Or is that 2016? Because we can't spend 2017 dollars yet.
Well, here, well, actually, in 2016 was 74, I think.
Okay, so that line item is for.
That's for operating supplies.
But that's the uniform.
The uniform is that below it, that's the.
So that's office.
Office, or two, three, yeah.
So office operating uniform. So we increased it a little bit from, um, uh, 7,500 here to 8,500.
But we just approved one year contract for 50,000.
Well, let's, let's take another look. Okay, so here janitorial, janitorial supplies in 27770.
That's where it is? 126,000? Says, supplies, chemicals and, chemicals and supplies, I guess it was.
So, I mean, I can definitely, uh, go through and pull some of, you know, the, uh, specific, specific detail on that one.
That was three weeks, three or four weeks ago.
Right, but we just approved what to spend up to 50,000.
Yeah.
The line item there is greater?
With a mender?
But we had 100,000 put in, 100,000 taken out, we had two items.
The 100,000 that we put in, and I don't have the account numbers, that was to do actual capital improvement work.
Yeah.
Flatwork at the bird, uh, John, help.
I know, but I guess I was, I was trying to find.
We had another, we had two other projects?
No, I was just trying to find it, that's all.
You're talking about the sidewalk?
Yeah, the sidewalk was part of that.
Yeah. Because we had to put it in before we could take it out.
Right.
Yeah, that was 100,000. Then the other was that 10,000 dollar item that went to Ben, it had 50,000.
Yeah, but wasn't that in this budget?
That is in this budget.
Yeah, that, I was gonna say, we can't spend 200, we can't.
I was trying to find out where it is.
Right, he's looking at current year expenditure. I don't have the account numbers either.
I can, I can definitely research and pull those specific account numbers out of that.
I'm just trying to, I mean, see, if, if they have, if, I guess if we had account numbers where they moved money, then you could follow the.
The council items had the, the, the account numbers, I had that in the action.
Yeah, they were.
On, on the 50,000?
Yes. We'll, we'll pull that up.
I'll have to pull it up.
We're, the last two years, we're, we're really doing our best to make sure that account numbers land on every item.
So, and, and really, the way, the way we're trying to do all the council items that have, um, um, there's a lot of times, there are two things that could happen on a council item. You could, you have to, if you're spending money, you know, you would have to know where you're gonna spend it, what account number you're spending it from. The second piece is if you need funding, a budget adjustment to fund it. So usually, there could be up to two, um, account items or transactions that could be in a council item. So, I'll look back and, and take a look at that one and see.
The 50,000 dollars for its, its, uh, janitorial supplies, in this fiscal year, funding was available. We also moved 100,000 dollars out of our facilities reserve to pick up a few extra, uh, small capital projects to complete the year. Uh, one was something for the fire station?
There was H vac, one of the fire station's complete replacement. There was also some, the drains for the, uh, parking structure, underground parking structure, and the runoff water from the building.
They, they were expenses, four or 5,000 dollars, and we didn't have a line item in the budget to cover. So we made 100,000 dollars available out of the facility balance to initially cover those three projects. Flatwork at Bird, the fire station item, and the drain, uh, in the underground parking lot here.
Don't go off of that, though.
No, we're not. Actually, um, John has, um, some information that he would like to, um, provide, um, so you all, to kind of give a little more in-depth, um, information on facilities.
Do you want to ask a question, that last bullet point there?
Okay.
So, facilities is one of those departments that not everyone exactly knows what it does, and thought it might be a good idea. Just to touch your base very quickly with you, I understand we have a lot of material to cover. As I assume you know, facilities does do the cleaning. How it's broken up is generally intern, although there's some exceptions. For instance, we sweep the parking structure, we don't enter the garbage cans, Parks does that, Parks does some of their own cleaning as well. We do repairs for all city buildings, including the minor things that need to be done, just like any house, the lights, retrofittings, replacements. Minor improvements, we do on our own. For instance, improving the alarms at the birds this year, we did that. We improved the water protection, the fire protection, and the connectivity to the alarm company. Larger improvements, we handle under the auspices of the building authority or the Southfield Library Building Authority. Now, the larger improvements, on page two, I do have a list of that. The green ones have been completed, the red ones are in progress, the blue ones are still to come. Part of the reason why the blue ones are still to come is that we're putting out for bids for architects, and we need new architects before we can address a lot of these issues. That's why there was some delay in how we were spending some of this money.
Yeah.
I thought it might be a good idea for you to at least see the, uh, projects that are there. Finally, the number of buildings and types that we address. As Lynn mentioned, we're an internal service fund, so we don't have a budget. We actually bill all the departments for our activity. This is how we break down the codes, as far as which buildings we service. This at least gives you an idea of what we're doing. I thought the next was a very interesting quote. That quote is actually from a city study that was conducted in 2007, and we know what happened after that. At this point, we'd be thrilled just to have the 37. Actually, we go to the next one, that's our current full-time staffing, and as indicated previously by other people, it's kind of a mixed match. It's as people retire, things were left open. There's not a lot of logic to how this is laid out right now. We're using a lot of contractors, but we don't really have anyone specifically assigned to make sure the contractors are addressing what they should be addressing. So the next proposed staffing, and just to let you know how dynamic it is, these vacancies have actually occurred since we prepared the budget. We've had retirements, so this is really an opportunity, and I think as we go into the proposed layout, we'll find ourselves much better with actually three supervisors, one for the day maintenance, one for afternoon maintenance, and one to oversee mostly the contractors. I think the skilled trades will do a lot better job of taking care of the building. We also work with a lot of non-career. Our administrative clerk right now is non-career, she's filling in for a full-time career person right now, and has been for several months. As you probably know, Mark Brandt, doing a great job overseeing our special projects under the. under the Building Authority. And also, we have seasonal custodial, although I just wanted to mention seasonal custodial, it's different, difficult for non-careers. There's a lot of reasons why people take a job. Often, it's not just money. Maybe they like working in parks, maybe they like working outside, but there's very few people who wanna come in and do the janitorial work because they enjoy it. So that gives us a real challenge. If it's hard for every other city to bring in non-career for every other city department, it's doubly hard for us. Because there's just not a lot of people who wanna do it because they like scrubbing. Just wanted to give you a little brief rundown of the department.
Okay, while you're there, the last bullet point, it says no new capital. So you're saying that all of the stuff that's on page two that's going to the Building Authority? What I'm talking, what I'm talking about is the ADA, the barrier free stuff? That's money that's already in the...
Right now, we have budgeted $4.7 million for that 3 million from cable, the 1.7 fund balance that was already there. Now, we will be coming back to you once we have a better handle on what these are gonna cost and asking for reallocation of these funds. But until we have a handle on how we're gonna spend the 4.7, I can't realistically come back to you and ask for an additional allocation of funds.
So all that money, all the money that's in there right now?
Has already been allocated.
Is what you're, you haven't put any new money in for 16, 17?
Correct.
The last bullet point.
Right, yes, because we still have the unspent money from fiscal 16 that we wanna move forward. So that, I don't consider, we don't consider that new money. That's the old money that's gonna be carried forward to the 17 budget group.
So the budget resolution will ask to carry that money forward for the capital projects I listed here.
Okay.
And if you recall, when we moved the 3 point, the 3 million plus on the cable, we listed the projects, fires, you know, last year we focused on roofs and structures. Now we're focused on ADA compliance and some structural items. Few years before that, we were knocking off mechanical systems, spoilers, AC units, roofs. Yeah, there's some of that.
Okay, for me, Mr. Manalb.
What happened with the energy item?
That's, the energy out is still in the process of prep, actually. I just had the occurring, I just had the phone update on that today. We have it every two weeks. They expect to have the mini grants, which were the fire stations prepared for us in June, and then the library after that, maybe in July, and then eventually the civic center and the ice room. It's moving forward, and actually, they're finding a lot of interesting information. I'm kinda eager to share with everyone what's in stock.
Any other questions? Thank you. Good job.
Okay, um, Motor Pool, Kevin Clark wasn't able to be here. For the most part, like I said earlier, this is pretty much, anytime you have an increase in vehicles that maybe purchased, the facility, I mean, not a facility, the vehicle charges should go up. Um, the other reason for increases is they did have two fleet technician positions that were funded. Um, I'm gonna say maybe even field this year, so will be carried forward. I think it was field maybe midway through the 16. Um, there were some capital expenditures. It doesn't look like these projects were completed in 16, so it looks like they're going to carry forward those amounts in their budget. And because they did not have anything under contract, we'll just go ahead and budget it here rather than, because there's nothing really to carry forward, cause it's not even in the process. Okay? Questions on Motor Pool? Okay, Public Works. Okay, um, so we'll talk, here, let's start with engineering. Engineering, as I've been learning since I've been here, is kind of the core of all of our infrastructure within the city. And so they're responsible for overseeing engineers and also doing any contract administration for some of the, for some of the projects. Their primary source of revenue comes from the charges that they charge to water, sewer, streets, and highways for all those projects. They do generate some other revenue as a result of services, you know, engineering services for right-of-way permitting and site plans. But Leah is here, and she's probably better at talking about this. I don't know if there's anything you wanna add, if you have questions for Leah?
Anyone have any questions for Leah about Nine Mile Road?
Well, for the most part, she still has the same number of staff. Um, and we'll find, as we get into a lot of the departments today, there's not gonna be a lot of fluctuation in the number of staff there.
Let me comment, chapters 47 and 48 are the chapters within our zoning ordinance which cover the fees charged. Those are currently, we've just started the process of review. And in addition, with the increase in economy of the number of site plans, we're utilizing one of our five private sector engineering firms to process the backlog. We're about three weeks, four weeks into that now, and we're moving, we're trying to ensure that we keep production moving out. Although it's not part of this budget, at a future date, we may need to have a dialogue about adding another engineer, simply because of the volume, what we're doing at all works, and then what's happening on the private side. But we're gonna continue to monitor that, right now with proposing status quo.
I do have a question on engineering. Engineering starts a year, two years, three years ahead of the actual project. We start engineering roads, we start engineering bridges, bridge replacements. How is that money charged against that, is it, is it, is it put in a, if you will, a parking lot? And then charged against that project? Because we haven't approved the project until sometime later down the road.
That is true. The, I don't know. Um, the absolute fact is yes. But we do, what I do, I'll tell you right up front, is when I go through the payments each year, the, I have to keep track of all capital for roads and water. So if they're engineering a project, we create, they create a project, I capitalize it, but I put it in construction in progress, which means it will not be, it cannot be depreciated, it doesn't go into service, quote unquote. So I continue to keep track of those. So like when we did the shovel ready, let's say, we spent all that money on shovel ready a couple of years ago.
Back in 2000 February, 2000?
We've done a majority of those projects, been out of all of them. So I do have some that are just really sitting on the parking lot. But I guess to answer part of your question is, the pre-engineering, when we come back to actually award the project, I don't believe that's included as part of the project cost.
Let me, cause you also have an element of engineering that's not always associated with a project. We do the Pacer Ring every two years. There's a scoring and evaluation. Every two years, we do our bridges, our scouring. And a lot of that kind of, you know, those are sizable engineering bills, but those studies feed into and help us identify future funding for bridging, bridges, when a deck may need to be replaced. That we are tracking those costs for a long time, but you will probably always have something that, for lack of a better word, doesn't hit. For example, you walked off with 40% of the federal aid money for 2019, and, but how many of your projects didn't get funded?
Yeah, I had, right, I had two projects that didn't get funded. So there's, you know, costs to get prepared applications.
We're gonna have, we have to absorb that never-hit funding.
Where does that money come from?
Well, it comes out, we're charging that to general engineering. You know, we spend money on engineering and potential design and testing and monitoring, doesn't always have a direct tie to a project. But we need money for what I call R and D. If you look at what we've done since 2009, you know, what you've been doing is queuing more products up so you can get a bigger piece of that pie. And there's a cost associated with that. Now, I think the city's done very well.
Yeah, I'm not arguing that point.
No, but it's, there are things that, you know, if they're kind of a general line item, that we're paying.
But eventually, those two projects that didn't get funding this year should resubmit.
That's intent. But I've always looked at it as kind of upfront research and development money. You have to do this to pay up the table.
It's gonna be shovel-ready.
Yeah. But we're not completing design. This is just evaluating a scoring and rating a road. It's not the same as having a set of drawings completely ready.
Okay, Mr. Manalb. Lee probably answered this. I have a couple, a couple items.
Okay.
Okay. Rental Motor Pool, is that through our, through our company, charged that?
Yes, yes, and so what happened is...
There is a car that has a actual decal, it's a city logo car, it's not a take-home car, and that's the Motor Pool rental for that car.
Okay. It went from... It went from 16,000 to 21,000. But you get a newer model or something?
There was, yeah, there, I mean, there was a new survey van that was purchased in this last fiscal year, so I don't know how, exactly how the charges go. If it's a new vehicle, so the charge maybe goes out now, yes.
Okay, with intro company, okay. The other one item, overtime went from 4,008 to 10,000. So you anticipate overtime this year because you have more private customers? Well, what is, what's driving that?
Um, historically, if we look, if we're looking at that line item, so in 2015, they spent 14,642, those were their actuals. So far, year-to-date, through the beginning of April, they spent 4,800. So 10,000 has kinda been the marker. We wanna say that last year was an outlier primarily because of a lot of the projects that they had. And I wanna say 10,000 was, was pretty much trying to see if we could bounce out, is that correctly?
Right, and also, if you recall, a year ago, when I got my promotion as city engineer, now I'm in the management group, so you don't have the overtime cost. That's what we had at one time, so.
It's true.
For you, I would say. For both of us, right?
Mr. Ferguson? Oh, you got, yeah, one more. Well, nevermind, I'll ask offline, this is more technical, so I'll ask offline. Mr. Nelson, do you have a hand up?
Yeah, I, I, our road projects. How are we, how are we looking at each project? How much was budgeted for what shares MDA has or FED, everybody else? And what comes out of our engineering department? And what is, is bid out as far as like OHM or Hubble, Roth, and Clark? What, how much their inspections are? I'm trying to, I'm trying to see a picture of a project. Give me an example, trying to track and say, okay, here's, here's a project that was, I don't know, I don't have it figured out, but then it was an $800,000 change order. And, and you'd like to look back at that project somewhere and say, this is what the bid was, this is what the engineering, if there was additional engineering costs, well, additional time. You know, we're looking at each project and saying, how are we doing in evaluating a project, whether or not we got a good deal or we went in the hole? Like, for example, Franklin Road years ago, we had, what was it? We had, was it $800,000 change order?
$8 million dollar job, ref cancel.
Franklin Road, and you can't follow, and then when you, you, I remember we went into Hubble, Roth, and Clark, for example, and, and when we were designing the interchange, I-696 interchange, somebody, I'd like to, I told, I forgot who was city administrator then. I'd like to know, how much did we give outside consultants for the 25 years we worked on, I'm sorry, it wasn't 25 years, it was 25 million dollars that we gave them over a period of time for re-engineering and redoing this and redoing that, and changing where the interchange was gonna be? And you try to follow those steps of a project. And is there any way we can really track, track every project to see where all our costs went? And if they performed better than, than we expected, or there were change orders, or there was other things that created extra dollars out of the city power cut?
So whenever I come to council with awards for different projects, so we use that 15% as just an average number. Well, we try and make it to be a safe number to use for the consulting, the construction engineering cost and the contract administration. So when these projects are set up in the city's accounting Eden system, there's a separate purchase order that's opened up for the contractor. There's another one that's opened up for that construction engineering that we're paying our engineering consultants. So there is, there's definitely, at the end of a project, we know how much we've spent for the construction engineering services, and we know how much we've spent, you know, the real cost of the final construction cost. So it's...
We have that, the one sheet of paper where we can look at that project and see what it cost us, when all the money went from that project? Could you have such a thing?
Well, we don't have one ready handy, but we can work on preparing that.
February, what, February, March, what we presented on last year's project was in essence...
Yeah, a lot of that was total costs for that, so.
Like the bond, a hundred billion dollar bond. You'd like to know, you know, we did 10 projects, this is where the balance of our bonds are, this is how much we have left. In other words, some kind of a running balance sheet, so to speak, to see... We have that, what we presented in February and March, or where we're at. Keeping in mind that all of last year's projects, none of them were closed out.
Right.
We're still going through warranty and other issues, and we track that. We can come back. I think our, what we talked about with our engineers is we wanted to get through, I think we have three more items that need to come to council for council act, action.
We actually have...
Section 24, you got it?
Yeah, I've got a list. So we have Bell Road, that's coming on May 25th, May 23rd, I'm sorry, for action. And the Section 24, Area 3 project, that, we did bid that out. That's the one that we've been waiting to hear back on the FEMA grant. So that project is very likely postponed now because we've not heard back from FEMA. And it's, you know, the cost of installing that lift station may not be worth it if we don't have, you know, the 800 or 900,000 dollars from FEMA.
But we'll see a consultant at a meeting, or calling meetings, and this project just died off, for example. I'll talk about the telephone poles out front. They kinda dropped through the floor, you didn't hear anything more about it. And yet, there was meetings that took place, and then it just fell off the table. And I guess I'd like to know, how much does it cost to have a representative from one of our engineering firms sitting in at these meetings and not, you know, what is our, you know, what do we give to these people? I mean, it's a big budget item, yet you can't go through a budget and find it. And I'd be interested in knowing, knowing, you know, how we're doing.
See, that's a question that I asked about 10 minutes ago. And they can give us an approximate cost, but they can't give us, they can't give us the sum costs that are upfront for, just like you say, we wanna remove all the poles upfront. We spend a lot of time, a lot of money, and trying to figure out how to do that, and then the project goes away. There's no way to compensate for that, cause there's never a project. But the money is spent.
Yes, there you go, it's what I'm talking about, where is it?
That's our line item for contractual engineering services that does not get tied to a project.
That's right, it's just a bucket of money that gets spent.
Because we still need those services.
Sure, well, yeah.
Yeah, that's an example.
The amount of construction that's going on, it's the only reason I bring it up, is that so much construction going on, somebody's gotta have a handle on it. And I know that our department is lean to lean. And, but you still have to stay on top of it. And, and I just wanna, you know, besides criticizing the department, it's just trying to find out, you know, where are we when we have all this construction going on? All the million dollars with deals going through and bids going out, and there's no way of tracking, you know, did we do... you know, did we do a good job with it?
Yeah. Well, the closest you could probably ever come is to say, after you've done a few studies, is to say, for every million dollars that we spend on a project, we spend X amount of upfront work that we can add to this job and, and make a sort of an average, but still, that's not accurate, it's, but it's a swag, so.
Well, you know, I do believe, and I have not had the luxury, Pierce made a little more with getting to really plan with the project accounting, application at Eden, so we can, you know, take a look at some reporting and some of the things, develop some of those things, to see what, you know, we can, uh, and how that system is functioning and how we're utilizing it, just so we can bring some.
Yeah, because in some cases, we've had bonds that we've left on a table that were just sitting around, right? We had that discussion, oh, on different kinds of business with the city where they had a post-up bond and they just went away, what?
You're talking about building bonds?
I'm talking about any kind of one.
I thought you were talking about-
You're, you're right.
Debentures.
Yeah, but I'm still talking, but, but the, but everything is bonded, all these construction jobs are bonded, aren't they?
Well, those are surety bonds for the construction project.
Okay, why don't you guys look at that?
I'm working on it, see my parking lot.
That's a bit more work, but it, but when you're trying to see, which when you try to, uh, try to see how we're doing financially as a city, those kinds of things, you know, have to come into place somewhere.
Okay, so we get to, um, the big chunk of, of, a big chunk of public works is our major and local streets, that's where you see a lot of the streets, and what I did was, they're technically two different funds, but I kind of merged them together. We get property taxes, Act fifty-one funding from the state, um, there were also bond proceeds that were issued, um, in last year, fiscal fifteen, that are being used to pay for some of the, um, uh, road construction. And then last year, we budgeted for use of fund balance, this year was not necessarily the case because we have issued the bonds, it didn't necessarily mean that. I think at the time, it was budgeted, and I think that, um, it was used as a placeholder at the time. So our expenditures, I wanted to just kind of look at it a little differently, we're spending about eight million dollars in operating, um, capital in our debt services rule, where we're seeing a big chunk of it. One of the things that I noticed in the budget was, uh, there were some reductions because of spot concrete, asphalt joint repairs for some of the supplies. And when I kind of thought through and kind of looked at what was happening, because we're making repairs to a lot of the, the streets out there, there really is not as much maintenance that is necessarily required in there, but we still have some, because all of our streets aren't perfected yet. So, um, so there is just a little bit of a decrease, um, there. Um, there are in the, and I did not, oh, actually, Larry, do you mind if I take a peek at this? One of the things I want you to note, and again, this document is in draft form, on page, I want to say eight? No, on page four, at page four of this document, that was my draft document, bind it, you'll have, you'll see all the projects that were set aside, uh, for major and local streets, so we're looking again at about twenty-three point seven million dollars for our streets. We'll get to water and sewer, but water and sewer is going to be on page five as well, so that'll give you the detail on some of the projects that are being carried forward or actions being proposed in this particular budget for us to find. Um, any other questions? Um, and I apologize, Larry was not able to be here today, so if there were real specific operational questions, um, I can take those back to him and get those back. Okay, okay, here, right now, Public Works has twenty-five staff, most of them are maintenance workers, public workers, supervisors. Everyone is, again, working lean, um, but this is where they are, um, right now. Questions on Public Works? Okay, we'll go to sanitation, this was an interesting one this year. Actually, this was the year that we selected, the city selected a new waste management vendor, um, we were able to see some reductions in the sanitation charges, um, which are being charged to, um, to the, uh, to all of our taxpayers. So, um, we were actually able to provide about a thirty-one dollar per month savings based on a hundred thousand dollar, uh, property value. So we were able to reduce, uh, our contractual charges by about sixteen percent. Questions?
They were eighteen percent, I wonder what's managed, just eighteen, fifteen percent?
Well, let me, let me, let me say this, so one of the things that I, when I noticed, because I, I initially had the same thought too, there are some other charges that are in the sanitation line item that are not necessarily part of the sanitation contract. So, let's see, I can actually-
Really check the score.
Yes, so, because I had the same, uh, the other thing is, there were some administrative costs that were included, um, in this line item as well, so that anytime we would have to go out and do any maintenance or any contract maintenance part, some administrative costs can be charged to that as well. That's four, five, oh, six, Pierce?
Yes.
I'm getting better. So, um, so yeah, so there are, there are some staff that are allocated to, um, to this, some staff time is allocated there as well.
Actually, the bottom line is that our taxpayers are going to get their garbage picked up for a less amount than they did the year before.
That is correct, bottom line, so this is good news. Okay, water and sewer, this is a very, very large fund, um, and we are responsible for, um, the assurance that our, our residents and, and, uh, and other tenants in the city, uh, get water and sewer properly coming through. Uh, we did, went through the rate model, um, and what we're going to do this year, there is going to be a seven percent increase in our water and sewer rate. So last year, we were paying ninety-four dollars, we're going to be paying almost a hundred and one. One of the big reasons, or one of the main reasons for the increase is because we got a four percent increase from the Great Lakes Water Authority, and then we got another three percent, uh, increase from SACLA. So ideally, we're, because this is pretty much a pass-through, um, on the rate increase, so the, what we have to pay to have, to get, you know, our water and sewer, uh, to be able to provide that service, we're just passing that one.
When did you do this calculation?
This calculation was probably, we looked at it and updated it about last week.
But your most recent number came from, uh, Joel Hefferman, who was fond of the Highland Park issue?
Yeah.
That's incorporated in there.
It is incorporated, because I know, it was just on the, on the news the other day that Detroit's increasing the sewer rates because of the Highland Park problem.
One of the things that I, well, and we're only getting water from Great Lakes Water Authority, so we're not taking the sewer charges. So, one of the things, the, what, what I do know is that they are capped at passing on to their wholesale customers at four percent. So, uh, so I'm not really certain at this moment, I can go back and confirm that, that the, that our rates are going to go up any more above and beyond that because of the Highland Park.
I, I could tell you-
I was just going to say, I can get a little more information, so, and with the, the Great Lakes Water Authority, we don't directly pay them for our sewage, but we still get their rate because we get our, we pay our sewage to Oakland County Water Resources, and they get it from GLWA, so our waste is still going there. So those increases are reflected to the county and then reflected to us, and the Highland Park charges, we are paying for that, all of us, um, for water and sewer, the sewer side is much bigger than the water side.
Oh, yeah.
So, that, that is a large, I'm not sure what the percentage is, but it was like sixty-five, seventy percent of the increase was because of the Highland Park non-payment.
Okay.
But the, but the rate on going up above and beyond, will be secure?
That's what Joe said to me Friday when I was talking.
They're already reflected.
Okay.
So we save on garbage but pay more in water.
Yeah.
Well, you don't want sewer, you want, you want water, so, it's up to you.
And actually, that's, that four percent was a lot less than some of us thought two years ago, when this entity was coming together. Uh, when, when they did the fine math on that, they said four percent system by, but some of us were expecting as much as ten, eleven percent increases.
Are we still, uh, keeping our water rates down because we fill up at night?
Through SACLA, yes.
Yeah, it keeps serving.
Your rates are still in the lower twenty-five percent for town, all of Oakland County.
Okay.
Okay, um, we have twenty-five point million dollars, uh, set aside for, or budgeted for fifteen infrastructure improvements. Um, sixteen and a half million of that is coming from fund balance, um, so instead of the entire twenty-five point nine million dollars being rolled into the rates, only about, uh, less than ten million dollars is being passed on through, so we're using plug balance now. And then, um, there were also two, um, billing clerks that were added, um, one of the things I recall Larry talking to me about was that some of the, there were some customer service issues, um, and some timeliness, and they believe these two positions can speed up that process. So, um, those two positions were added this year. Any questions on water and sewers?
Do we know how many, uh, scofflaws we have in, in Southfield on water? That aren't paying their bills?
I do not know that.
Well, I mean, we've got some hotels that owe us like, uh-
We review a monthly aging of all receivables, and most of the hotels are two, but they're, they continue to improve, they're paying, but I can tell you, uh, this is, uh, about eighty-nine, it's like eighty-three thousand, which turned over to taxes for non-payment.
This is only- It doesn't sound like very much.
Our, it's, our water loss isn't, this is most recently for-
And I think it's, it's primarily because we pass a lot of that on to the, um, we put it on its property tax bill, so.
Right, right.
And Fred, with, with the fixed rate meter, I think that should be able to tell us to, well, who's not paying? And, and for part of the demonstration that I saw, the fixed rate meter reading process, we can determine who's not paying their bills, who's shooting more, who's not paying, so, so that would give us opportunity to catch you.
And where are we at the, with our new plan for the renters, the, or, no, for the, not necessarily the renters, but-
The landlords?
Anyone that's not paying their bills, but you know, or-
Oh, that was bad. That was, I mean, that was-
No, I-
Right, I, I don't know, I'd have to talk to Larry, I don't know.
I know they're, they were excited to, so, uh, that was-
Okay, I'll put in the parking lot, we'll get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll, we'll put the, um, aging of the water receiver line on the finance committee, just so you give a flavor of what we look at every month.
Where's the Michigan end, dollars, is that, under tax?
Well, those, those were rolled to taxes, and of course, the city was reimbursed for all the delinquent taxes and water by the county. And so that number, because that property was not foreclosed for two, two thousand seven, I believe, so it was about, it was about a four million dollar total tax liability, including the water and all the penalties, and they then filed bankruptcy, and bankruptcy law and bankruptcy judges have the power to, you know, thwart the, the whole process of the tax, you know, the, the, really the predominance of the tax bill. And so that number could have gone down as low as six hundred and ninety, because the law says that when you're in bankruptcy, the amount that you owe for taxes and any, any delinquent taxes is what's the value of the property? Well, the value of the property at the time was appraised somewhere around six hundred and eighty thousand. But there, the debtor did work out a plan and was paid one point eight million in terms of back taxes, including water, and then that got allocated to all the jurisdictions.
Your water service to that building presently?
No, we've shut it off, we shut it off in like two thousand and ten.
It all goes into basement.
Yeah, well.
Remember, we were dealing with relocation of people?
Yeah.
Okay, um, we're going to move on to the administrative departments. On page fifteen in your presentation, this will give you kind of a comparison between last year and this year for all of the departments. So if you want to kind of hold that as a placeholder, I'll go through, um, um, some of the, uh, the high level variances that I see, um, or that I noticed in some of the departments. Here's the position change, then again, there was really, between all the administrative departments, a net increase of about one, they're really, pretty much just trying to maintain, um, status quo until we can establish ability in our financial resources. Most of these, no, I think all of these are general fund funded, they are, that is correct, except there might be some other, some other resources in there. So the department head says, I'm going to go through, kind of, uh, do a highlight, uh, they are available here, if they want to come up and add something after I've kind of gone through, but feel free, I think, to do so. I do turn into a pumpkin at some point, and so, you know, you know what I mean, okay? Okay, so for administration, um, there was pretty much a decrease of, of about seventy-four thousand. One of the things that I noticed as I've gone through some of the positions, um, sometimes the, and I said this last week, when we hire tier-two employees, we've had a lot of turnover and attrition, we hire tier-two employees, we do see some, um, um, some, some beneficial decreases. So we did see, uh, uh, some decreases there because of the hiring of a, a tier-two employee. Fred, you want to, you good? All right, I'll keep rolling. If I, I do talk fast, so if I, if somebody wants to slow me down, feel free, okay. Fiscal Services, um, and, um, or OMB, which is Office of Management and Budget, that is my department, there was an increase here. One of the reasons for the increase was, um, as we were going through, as I was looking at the departments, um, Central Services actually contained two departments, one of them was Risk Management, which I'm responsible for, and then there's also the other Central Services, which has, um, the mailroom and a prep shop, which Laverne is, um, oversees that department. I thought it would be beneficial if we split, actually, risk used to be under OMB, um, so I just, we did, uh, a move back there. Um, and then, um, there's also increase because, um, they hired me. All right.
Is that the whole seven hours, seventy-four hours?
Yeah, exactly. Okay, um, all right, Accounting, um, one of, a few years ago, I can't remember exactly when, um, Georgiana Smith retired, she has graciously been assisting us, and please don't take this for granted, this is how we get our paycheck, uh, with the, with the support of Pierce. So, um, she is really ready to go into the sunset, and so we really need to get a replacement, so we're going to add a, a senior payroll specialist, um, here. This has been a challenge to really get the right type of person that can come in and hit the ground running, um, as well, so that recruiting is ongoing right now. Purchasing, uh, purchasing needs a purchasing analyst, uh, there's a lot of activity going on in the city right now, um, and, um, we really do need to get some, uh, another person there to speed up that process a little bit. Uh, there was a position budgeted in fiscal fifteen, sixteen that recruiting had, that posting has gone out, and I think we're actually in the, uh, uh, middle of recruiting for, so we do believe that that position will be posted anywhere between now and in the beginning of fiscal seventeen. Uh, Assessing had an increase, there were some increases and some fringes, we did some comparisons to last year's budget to this year, there were some adjustments that were, um, being made. Also, the department is now being responsible for the printing and postage costs of mailings. Um, what we're really trying to do is move expenses that make sense into, uh, certain departments' budgets, um, so that we can track the costs and be able to say, okay, this department, the real cost of that department, um, costs this. So, um, we did actually, and Mike, um, he, he's budgeted for, I don't have his position, let me go back. Yeah, okay, Assessing is budgeted for technically six, um, people, he is, he does have an aged workforce, um, and one of the things that I do know, and Mike may want to attest to this, is that it is really difficult to get good assessing staff that have the certifications there. So, um, Mike, anything you want to add about Assessing?
State's still trying to figure that one out, they're just behind in all levels of certification and a lot of vacancies around the state.
What's the increase in fringes?
So, there were some retirement calculation, um, costs, when I looked at last year's budget to this year, that really weren't, um, properly calculated. Um, and so that's, um, we made sure that they were properly calculated this year.
Mr. May, I have my best question. If we're going to be adding, or hopefully adding a, another body, and you're only increasing it by sixty-six thousand, that seems on the lower end, with all these other increases, printing costs, fringes.
Well, sixty-six thousand, maybe only for one, first year, uh, I mean, you don't hire, typically, you don't hire people at the top of the, the pay range.
And then too, because we know we're going to get a tier-two.
But it's still, I don't know what the pay range is, but even for one person, when you include all the benefits, it just seems very low.
Good percentages of fringe, like the other one?
Well, it's less, no, it's less because it's a tier-two, so it won't be as high as it's typical, but still.
Ari, I can, um, if you don't mind, I could park it, park, park it, and then I'll, I'll, I'll pull the exact sentence, I do have some notice in my office, but I'll, um- I do have some notice in my office, but I'll...
I thought you said that what the...
Is it possible that you're absorbing a part-time person or non-career right now?
Yes.
I mean, that might...
Except they go up one, except they're going up one. So that means that if it's a part-time person right now, that's a half a hefty year.
And I believe that we're going to take, we'll take away the, right now, Mike has a non-career serving as a quasi-deputy. And so the funding from that is fiscal sixteen, it's going to be used to kind of offset that. But I can get the specific costs for that position to show the movement of that.
Have we gotten a way of reorganizing that department?
Except for the fact that I've had two retirements, actually, three retirements, and we filled one. But the other vacancies, it's just going to be a long time coming.
Basically, what you have to do is still file a, which means that we have, and that's going to be one of our challenges, is whether we're competitive enough still.
Michael, is the reason that there aren't that many people out there with the skills, is because there isn't a training program that's going on? Or is it people just don't want to be in assessing?
For the most part, it's a training program. It was more difficult for the level four position. It was a very difficult program and you just couldn't get the people to go into it. Those that did failed, fell out of it. The lower levels, you know, for the most part, the assessing business has become a female business. And for some reason, they don't want to become level fours, and they'll become level twos, maybe level threes, but they top out. They're, you know, family first type situation. So it's from that perspective, I think, largely.
What's the training, do people?
Estate certification.
So it stays a different course?
Right, yeah, it's a year-long program for each level. You do not, no, no.
Moving right along.
Okay, all right. Technology services, I'm going to just kind of talk through some of these in the front of this out here as well. So there were two things, again, Laverne oversees tech services and she also oversees central services. So there were kind of a lot of things that were kind of going on here. Claire, why don't you come up and talk to her? Okay, I'll be for her. Again, we see the benefits of a tier-two employee after Jackie, who was a previous, the former systems tech, system support tech person, she retired. There's going to be an increase in computer services by forty-five, as well as contractual professional. You hear Laverne talking a lot of time about how she's trying to keep our network safe and make sure that we're in good shape. Making sure we're, you know, okay for disaster recovery, making sure there's some network monitoring going on. There's a lot going on. There was actually an email that I saw floating somewhere, where now there's this scam where they'll contact the treasurer and say, hey, you need to wire a certain, you know, dollar amount. So those are things that, you know, this department kind of monitors. And also, again, this is another effort, training and, and I shouldn't have said travel, training costs were moved from support, out of support and moved into the department's budget. And then central services, we talked about that, but the transfer to risk management. But the other thing is that when the printer retired, I cannot recall his name, he retired right when I came here. There was pretty much, that position would not be filled. And pretty much is, is as you go through and become a little more efficient, there are better ways for us to use the printing technology. There was a new piece of equipment that was purchased, so a lot of those duties have been reassigned. Is anyone adding one?
Mr. Raywell?
Looking at technology, is that basically what is being used hands-on within the system, the city? And my guess, what my concern is that, that, um, there are things that we should be looking at as far as is putting technology out on the street. And give you an example, like one, two, three was in Lauderdale putting in, putting in cable. And I called John and said, do we know, because I think, who's going to check and make sure they repair the right-of-way? Number two is, 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 did they get a permit? Number three is, do we have, do we know where it is being put down and where so that we know where cable is placed in the city? And we, I, Ellen John's here, but we didn't get an answer yet, did we, John? Or what? So anyway, it's not putting anybody on the spot, but I just think, you know, that there are so many things happening, just like it was happening in New York, and I brought that article in, you know, they're putting kiosks out with the wifi and all that, all this. I mean, I think our whole area here, and I know Laverne is concerned about safety and what's happening with hacking and all that baloney, but, but it's so important to go to the next step and have, and have people who's walking and they can stop at a, you know, it used to be a telephone booth, now it's, it's a kiosk, I brought a picture of it, but anyway, that you can now go to that and do your thing. And so I'm looking at in-house and outside of the city buildings. And what are we advancing, putting more conduit down and where the conduit is located? And, 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 you know, we, just so, I guess, so streets and sewers and water can find out what, you know, instead of breaking into a cable or something. Nobody seems to know where they are and nobody's kept up with it. This is not just now, it's been going on for a long time. So, so there's no old records of it, but I'm just trying to get what we do have and start tracking it so that we can find out what's here and then go ahead and expand on it. You know, I was telling you how I was working in Highland Park and we're actually going to make that, you know, Highland Park, the technical city, the tech city, and putting cable all the way down Woodward Avenue to the river and owning the whole corridor. And I still don't know with Q one, while they're tearing things up, but any conduit down while they were tearing up Woodward Avenue, if it's down or not. But I think the city, the future of the city is to become, you know, more...
Tech savvy.
Technical, and go way out on the land and out of the box. And I know there's a balance between what you're doing. I mean, being safe is good, but, but I don't know how you can guarantee you're always going to be safe.
Well, I want, you can't, but you have to mitigate data breaches and things of that nature. I don't want to minimize it because that is a major risk the city faces. But getting to your question, I would love to handle, you know, citywide, outside of city departments, but we just don't have the staff to do that. If you look at the budget for technology services, we have nine positions and two are vacant right now. So that means I'm doing my job as technology director and a network engineer, and I have another department. And we just don't have enough resources to have a technician go out and sit with a contractor. Now, what we do do internally, we work with our GIS team and Sally is more than willing to document anything you ask her to document. But even some of these companies, they don't know where their fiber is. They have to document their resources as well. But I would love to venture out into that, but most companies have a network team. We don't even have a network person. Most people have a help desk team. I mean, I'm just saying that we have all these thoughts, that I know we need to do something because I hear all these projects.
That's going to be as important as putting down a road.
I understand that, and I'm willing to do that. And I'm saying to you, I understand, I totally agree with you, but people, you need, you know, all the things that you want, you need people to maintain all of those things.
We build expressways and we put in sewer and water and expand it and gas lines. And cable is so cheap to put in, to put in the conduit and every so often, put in a manhole so that down the road, you've got every highway in this country actually wired. And, and, and I just think that Southfield has led the way. We probably have more wire than anybody, but I think that knowing where it is and how we can make use of it is very important. And I guess, you know...
And I, I agree with you, I'm saying I agree with you.
I just think that, that if you're going to be talking future anymore, I don't know where we're going to find money, but it's, but it's almost going to be more important than putting in a road because the way you're going to transmit information in the future, and how we're going to live in the future, you know, how much stuff we've gotten around.
And I'm not even saying we need full-time employees to do that. You know, you can outsource these things to people that are specialists. But I think even John mentioned in his presentation, even when you have contractors, someone has to manage the contractor. So I'm saying I agree with you, that's something we can look at, but right now, you know, you can only be at so many places at one time.
I know that, I wanted to just make sure I lay it on the table.
And I agree with you.
Mr. Raywell?
And that's my question dealt with central services.
Okay.
If you...
Oh, yeah, Laverne can answer that.
What is the five hundred days that is about, I mean, for risk management? And I'm assuming, I know we pay into what MML for, for insurance.
MMR.
Yeah, MMR, what is that, what is that number made of?
So what that, and actually, let me, go here. What that, what that department does is there is a full-time employee that runs the program. A lot of the things that the city decides to do, such as goodwill gestures, such as your sewer, you know, backups, your pothole repairs, when, when some of the vehicles get into an accident and they're less than a certain dollar amount, they'll be paid out of, out of the risk fund. So, so that's what the other thing, also, insurance premiums come out of that budget as well.
Okay, I was saying that is, well, and that's what's kind of familiar, insurance premium. But, so you're saying that that covers everything else?
Yes, everything...
That it's not covered by any of them?
Yes, yes. So there are some things that we, you know, handle, outside of paying the employee and paying the premiums, there's some other things to do. And there may be some other premiums and things that we pay too for some, for some other items.
Plus, before we go to risk management, there's a deductible that we have to pay. We have to do with the fifty thousand?
Two fifty.
Two fifty? Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars before we go to risk management. They cover the catastrophic things, but we got to have some skin in the game too. Fred?
The discussion about wiring in our right-aways, the engineering department does monitor the entities. Paul permits, early I mentioned that we're taking a look at chapters forty-seven and forty-eight, reviewing those. We know what is from point A to point B. If we fall short on anything, it's the requirement of the ASBIL documents. There's also one other, council's aware of that, planning, engineering, and building have recently, have recently and are going through training on the BSNA software. The fact of the matter is, we really, no one is really, we've not been able to identify a software product that helps us with that permit tracking for the engineering because it's in a right-of-way, sometimes a mile, two miles long. The engineering monitors the restoration of the sites. If they're working in our area, where they have to call Miss Dig. A year ago, engineering for people who hadn't closed out projects within the required time, I know we captured one hundred and fifteen thousand. Again, that's another area where we probably need to be going out ticketing and saying, hey, you know what? We'd allow to capture your money, we want you to finish the job, get it restored. I think staff does a good job with the restoration, but we could do a better job in the final ASBIL. And that's what, when we talk about revising chapters forty-seven and forty-eight, is to tighten that up. I have said to council, for the world to me, I'm trying to figure out why our Metro Act funds are decreasing. When I know more and more cable is being laid in this community, we're supposed to get five cents per linear foot. And that number should go up. We know on, for example, Evergreen Road, fourteen different companies have fiber in that, that area. Nine miles, a similar thing, Northwestern Highway, we know that ninety-eight percent of the city's wired for fiber. The problem it causes for us, that's our right-of-way. We've got to dig around that to get to water main, to address our sewers. We've been fortunate in our current infrastructure that we're relining. If we were in the position of rebuilding, we would have a far more costly process because of the amount of fiber out there. So we're putting that under the microscope, looking at what best practices. As Laverne has said, our GIS people help us to map that, mapping that. But that's also in the Activities Council approved last fall with the permit and the technology fee. For the first time, you have a fee and a mechanism to pay for some of this technology that's being driven by the building department, planning and engineering. Before that, we didn't have a way to pay for it. And Laverne, what do we get for every fee? How much goes for engineering or tech?
I forgot, I forgot, I know it's a decent amount.
But there's a piece of every application.
One or two.
Now available for IT.
Do you know if all of the fiber is in conduit?
That's the other, is it in conduit or is it active? How much is overhead? When we're doing Evergreen, it appears half of it is in conduit on the Western lead side. And about, I think we had six or seven companies overhead co-locating on existing roads.
I know our INET is in conduit. The INET goes to all the remote city buildings that isn't.
Because, you know, it's pretty hard to find glass underground, so...
I'm going to go ahead and say this because I know the mayor and the folks who went to Korea are going to be presenting some neat things on Korea. You got to remember, they have better public policy than you have shared transmission and they, they control how radios and that are bought there still, very different.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Human resources, there was a council action earlier this year to add a deputy HR director that has been funded, that will be carried over the posting, actually just went public, I think in the last week or so. Laurie is here to help me with that. Printing and advertising cost increase, we're, are, just slightly about, you know, to help post these. We, and what you have to remember in the past, because we were posting positions, there really was no advertising that was necessary. So now that we're filling some of our vacant positions, you're going to have some advertising costs that are coming in there. Also, training and operating supplies moved out of central services and support to the departments as well. Laurie, is anything you want to add or, you're good, okay? Any questions for human resources?
Do we ever find people in, in Michigan Works?
Oh, yes.
Laurie can answer that.
And our leads here as well, so yes, we do get a lot of, a lot of the non-career staff, most of the non-career staff.
But currently, the treasurer has two people from Michigan Works? Section A.
I mean, there are a lot of professional people that are looking for work too.
Sure, yes, sure.
Fred?
Okay, law department, hi, Sue gave us some money back. So actually, there was an administrative assistant position in Legal Department that came back, so we saw you there. Any questions for Sue?
Mr. Raywell has...
You still have those, somebody at the front desk, right?
Bonnie, no, Bonnie retired, right.
So it means you have a boss?
We, I have, I have one administrative assistant, but we also had a legal assistant. He has since retired. So, and he was a higher, actually, a higher-paid person than even like a regular legal secretary. So what we're going to do now is not fill his position, but get more of a clerical type to sit up at the front and be there at the window.
I was just concerned about that.
Yes, yes.
I know how much your department's out of the office, your corps.
Right, yeah, absolutely, so, so we'll still have a decrease.
I was trying to look out for your...
Well, thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
Mr. Raywell?
I'm just looking at process and I'm a firm believer in driving costs back to the originator. So how far are you along in driving costs back to the originator department? As you've done this quite a bit, and that's part of your process, which is good. I see you've done this quite a bit, and that's part of your process, which is good.
Um, there are a couple of things that I had, there were a few things that I had on my radar, just stuff that I was seeing approved. One of them was travel.
Right.
The other thing was operating supplies, that's where we're going to allow all the departments to order from Staples directly, and it's come directly out of their budget. There were maybe a couple of other items, those were mine too, because I was just, it was a little bit, I couldn't control who was doing what and spending. There are some other departments that I think we need some evaluation, we need to really evaluate, really, does it make sense that these charges are here? Who has the ability to approve them? Does it, no, those are just some things that I think as we spend it next year and really looking at.
Okay, so I'm going.
Yes, this is going to be. So these were some ones that I said, okay, these are ones I know that I can kind of relate to without knowing all these. Okay, Community Relations, there was an increase here, but there was an offsetting decrease somewhere else. So one of the things here is the move to consolidate Human Services to Community Relations to better align the strength of the department, and so that they can, you know, people can almost in a sense go to a one-stop shop to get information, or get their questions answered or services needed. There will still be two positions that will be funded from Human Services in there. The name of that, I think that as we go through that, you know, whatever the naming rights, I'll leave that up for administration to clarify that. Calendar rate fees, usually about twenty-five thousand, I took a look the other day to see if we were on target, I think we were actually on target. There's going to be a rider added to Community Services, and then there's going to be an increase due to increasing contractual professional, due to the renewal for the Southfield app being charged to the department, I think previous was charged to support.
Support services.
So that was another example, Dan, of something I said, just.
Sure. Mr. Mandelbaum?
We're consolidating Human Services to Community Relations. Are we moving Human Services into the campus, or are they staying out by the bird?
It is our intent to relocate them from the bird. I have had some very, very preliminary discussions with an outside group about possibly coming in and doing some type of ground, rental after bird, and leaving that facility open for the programming we do with the bird, the Christmas functions, the gazebo concerts, and we're looking at that. It's our intent to bring Human Services over to City Hall.
So that's more potential savings?
More potential savings for Parks and Rec, which is necessary, and at some point in the next year, on Friday, I'm in a meeting with Plant Moran where we're looking at, you know, we've got that structural deficit, and it needs to be, and before we, there's that some discussion, some people will come back and say, cut programs, and the response is, let's not cut programs, let's attempt to identify other public-private partnerships to keep programs going, to address the structural deficit. And there are things with the Human Services, for example, we've got five different programs, all using five different applications, all processing intake at the same time. One person can be processing intake and screening people, giving them better, to better assistance, more direct, the record keeping associated with that, we just got to start thinking a little differently about that. Eventually, Chor will come over to this program as well, and that'll be part of this fold.
Thank you. With the Southfield app and the website, is there some of that money going to be the app, or is it more just maintenance?
I could, I'd like to help build some bikes there. We actually are currently in the process of redeveloping the app, we're doing the graphics over again, we're adding some new value features to it, such as the ability to report potholes on the fly, a number of other features that we're looking at, that will be included in the current costs, there'll be no additional cost for those additional features that we're rolling out. And then down the road, we've also discussed as well, adding a revenue feature to that. We're not quite yet to that point, but we'd also like to have premium listings where we're actually, we'll charge a fee to different businesses that would want to participate, that would have a premium listing. So that would be a revenue source as well. And while I'm on potential revenue sources, if I may, we're also looking at adding increased merchandise to the city store, and considering trying to have an online component to that possibly as well, if that's feasible. And so then we would have increased generation of revenue from sales of merchandise as well.
So with the app, I think that was originally, what originally did you, there was thought about putting in like weekends throughout the city?
Yes, that's still on the table, you know, there's been some logistical concerns there, that's not something we're moving forward at present, but we may still in the future.
And what about websites, digital?
Tech Services and Community Relations had discussed, some preliminary discussions on that. I know that Laverne had some additional funds in your budget, I believe, there's some enhancements there, so we're looking at some upgrades there as well.
What are you ever talking about? Are you talking about the Spots South?
The Spots South, the city app.
So you'll be able to do it on there?
That's the hope in the future, yes, that's what we're looking for.
I have a question. Is our ambassador program going to accomplish anything?
It is not, there's no budget associated with that. In fact, just this evening, we had round two of interviews. The interviews continue tomorrow night, we've had several evenings last week as well. We got about fifty candidates respond, some very qualified individuals, very encouraged by the, just the, you know, quality of some of the candidates that were received, and we're having that interview process to narrow those folks down. There's no budget tied to it, as I was born out of the Total Income Commission, Councilman Mandelbaum was instrumental in developing that program, his days at the TLC. And just for those that aren't aware, it's really a community engagement program to share the great things happening in Southfield, not only with our residents, but outside of our borders, with businesses, you know, the community at large, and also to get input from them for new initiatives as well.
Okay, as far as the products that you want to increase in the store, do you have a demand, is it, how do you, how do you guess what the demand is going to be?
Yeah, it's a great question. We actually do, we've got a lot of folks who have said, you know, typically in the city store, we've had like, you know, shirts, different wearables with city logo on it. There's not a great demand for folks wanting to wear a city logo on a hat or a t-shirt. So what we're actually doing, we're in the process right now of developing artwork that's more progressive, a little more stylized, some people actually might want to wear them, you know, so, not that, you know, the logo's not appealing, but it's just not something that makes for something you necessarily would want to, you know, have on your shirt or hat. So we've got some art in development right now, that's really high-end stuff, we've got a committee reforming to kind of go through and get everyone's input on that, to make the selection process and narrow it down to what we feel would be the most, you know, universally appealing. And then from there, we want to have an assortment of different items. As an example, we just recently ordered license plate covers, so we're getting them for about a buck a unit. We plan to sell them for three or four dollars a unit, so there's a nice profit margin each one of those. It's something folks actually may want to put on their car, you know, for three, four bucks, you know, I can represent, and it's a great promotion of Southfield as well, so they can, you know, represent the city for a couple bucks, and we're making a nice profit margin on each unit. And the hope and intent with this other art is to do the same with, you know, coffee mugs, tumblers, wearables, I think. New water bottles.
All right, thanks.
Okay, support services is actually another area where I have the ability to approve the transactions here, and that's pretty much, I don't want to say the catch-all, but that's usually where we'll, you know, we're funding, training, and some memberships and things like that. There were a couple things that were also in here. You recall like through the past few years, we would have, sometimes we would have, we would lose our tax tribunal cases or appeals, and so we would have to cut a check back to the community, or not the community, back to the property owner for something, for a case that they may want. So through the years, we've gone through, you know, that the economy's getting, been getting a little better, anyone who was going to appeal almost has appealed as a result of the Great Recession, so we were able to not have to budget as much in that refunds line there. The other thing, which is, it is concerning to me, is last year we were able to set aside in contingency about one point three million, we really were not able to put that much aside in contingency, so that's why I'm, my motto this year is we really have to spend cautiously, because we only have about a half million dollars in contingency as for this year.
And contingency is for what?
Contingency is for some of those unex, I should explain, unanticipated expenditures that may come up during the year that, you know, okay, we need to find the money from somewhere. So I hear, you know, there's always this model, oh, find the money, find the money, well, that's on you, so.
Okay, a number of years ago, down in Bridge Street, the bank caved in, at big, heavy range, the bank caved in, and right off the, right off the bat, we had to find around six hundred thousand dollars to shore up the bank, and wouldn't have come out of there.
Depending on what it was, and I'm, because I'm not sure, is that something that would have come out of risk, or would that come out of risk?
I'm sure it came out of risk, but immediately, we had to get some contractors down there to shore up the bank so that it didn't cave in.
Right.
And take, because it took it apart. So we had to have somebody out there the following day, that's before we went to risk. I'm sure the risk, you know, offset the money that we spent, but.
I got that replaced with Corps of Engineers, that money, six hundred fifty thousand.
But the next morning, we had to come up with some money to get, is this what you're talking about?
Yes, support is really where items like that.
Or is this if we run out of number two pencils, if we have to?
Well, I would say that this is the money for number two pencils, or when we have to fight a well, and we're occurring additional legal.
Okay.
Item you're describing, I would first look to our infrastructure buckets, you know, is it storm-related?
Right.
Water, what caused it? I would first look at that, but.
There was a big mudslide.
Yeah, it was.
Eighteen thousand we spent having Pembroke monitor.
Okay.
You know, would be something that gets charged there.
Okay.
Congressman Dolenberg got us six hundred fifty thousand, because Corps of Engineers is tributary in the Rouge. Got to be from the bank.
Just from a protocol standpoint, Fred, you might be able to answer this, if something of that happened, like, you know, something's kind of, you know, relatively, let's say catastrophic, or let's say unexpected, from a protocol standpoint, can you just call in a engineer, call in a firm, and a good favor and credit, Southfield will pretty much seal the deal, and we just.
We have emergency for insurance.
Yeah, emergency.
If we had a building flood out, you know, we would call our insurance entity, and we know that they probably call SWF, and fire now, we have a certain problem, we'll place that in.
Okay, so the emergency contingency, and then we pay for it later? Or it's taken care of, the procedure we're hoping?
Okay, any other questions? Okay?
Okay, on the cultural recreation, these are the last three purposes, you guys just hang in there, I'm not a pumper yet. Okay, so, first one is going to be cable, then we'll come to library and then parking wreck, okay? So cable gets its funding from two funding, well, pretty much, yeah, from two funding sources, one is AT&amp;T and one is Comcast. And then there's these peg fees, and then you have these franchise fees. Peg fees is a restricted source of funding for cable, the franchise fee is unrestricted. This year, we did not have a planned use of fund balance, and if you may recall, there was three million dollars in fund balance of unrestricted funds that were transferred out of cable over to fund some infrastructure improvements, okay? On September, and Lisa's here, she can definitely help me out if necessary, franchise fees will be going down effective September first, because of the contractual agreement that was signed to reduce annually the percentage of the fee by a quarter of a percent. And again, they did do some hiring last year, they did see some savings because they picked up Plan Two, Tier Two employees. There are no planned grants that will be, that were going to be distributed this year, pretty much because there really isn't fund balance available for that. And there's also going to be a reduction in some operating expenses, legal fees, travel printing, et cetera, et cetera, just to some analysis of what the spending was compared to what their needs were.
Any upgrades in technology that's being planned?
Um, I'll say this, and then I'll let Lisa add to this, so one of the things we, I did ask, because there were some planned projects that were listed through the years that cable would fund, cable really has to, the position that they're in now is they can fund their operations in this specific initiatives that are decided between cable and the administration on what type of capital improvements could be done. So a lot of the things that were, you know, planned to do different things for different departments, cable really is not in a position to do anymore. So Lisa, you want to add anything?
We're going to hopefully be bringing you our final stage of our upgrade, where we're going to be rewiring council chambers, we're also going to do planning over, we're going to, so he doesn't have to get up and down, he can control everything from his station. We also need to put.
Who is?
Oh, Terry.
Oh, oh.
So he can just sit at a station and have everything he can do there. We have to need to put wiring in the pavilion and fiber to the library, because there, right now, there's no way that we can switch from the library back and forth, because that's an SD signal, and so we have to upgrade it to HD. And then we're getting some cameras and some things that we needed for our server room, but other than that, that'll be it. And what she's saying about in five years, we should be going, we're going to be four hundred thousand dollars less between Comcast and AT&amp;T, the AT&amp;T agreement is expiring in 2017, but I'm sure they're going to want to go down to two percent, just like Comcast. And hopefully, we can get them to go like we're doing now, they're going to go five percent each year, but we're going to be short four hundred thousand dollars. Well, we're still working on that, you know, remember.
You said it was down to two percent?
Well, yes. Remember, the state law says that for peg fees, under the uniform agreement, the peg fee is two percent. We've been at three historically here, so we have been negotiating with Comcast, we have kind of, at least very preliminarily, developed a kind of a step down, so that we don't get to two percent, maybe till midway, something like that, through the term of the uniform agreement. So that, that really is not a fix.
This is not final.
It is not final, I mean, we're working at that, because it is a lot of money for, I think what, what Lisa's saying, for, if you had, if AT&amp;T and Comcast went down to the two percent, you'd be at four hundred thousand. Again, we have arguments that we're going to make against AT&amp;T as well, because from Comcast, we got the internet, we got the INET, so that you have to balance, you can't, AT&amp;T doesn't have a right just to say, I'm going down to two percent, we're going to factor in some of the other things, so it's fluid at this point.
It's so, yes, very preliminary.
Mr. Krasik.
Yeah, I gave Fred a list of things that they were supposed to purchase. How do we, how do we see what was done, and how much of those were purchased? Where we sent a big list of items, and, and, and the other thing is, you know, they show overtime, and each time you have a request, and then you go over and overtime. It goes from, you know, it was, council adopted thirty-six thousand, there was sixty-one thousand was actual, then they, council adopted thirty-six, and it went to almost forty-six. Then we're back to thirty-six again. Lisa, how do you work your overtime? Who gets all this overtime?
I probably get the most of it, because I'm, during the years when we were lean, I was doing the majority of stuff that I, we had to do to make up for two positions. Now, the two people that we hired, they're working, they have a second job, they're working, so they work for, with me, but if something comes up, I've got to take care of it.
The only reason I say that is, is because, I came in on Saturday, and I had somebody looking at, where are you going to put monitors?
That was me.
Yeah, that's overtime, right? Yeah, I mean, I don't see a reason, I'm not thinking on it, I'm just saying is, I don't see a reason to come in on Saturday, what you can do during the week. You know, when you're coming through the lobby and looking, putting monitors, sitting with whoever's selling the product, you can do that during the week as much as Saturday. I don't think it was either Saturday or Sunday. I just, I just, it's not just your overtime, we're looking at overtime, please. I'm looking at overtime, please, fire, and wherever I see, you know, overtime being expended, you gotta cut things back, that's all. I mean, I'm looking at the budget this year and I think every employee's gotta understand what's going on. We're down to, what, $2 billion, $1 this year? We lost another $4 million? Or, you know, we were at $35 billion and we went to $25, now we're down to $2 billion?
Oh, the tax base?
Yeah, tax base.
Billion.
Yeah, billion.
We were at 3.6, 3.8 billion, we're at 2.4.
Yeah, now it's 2.1.
And that is a 3/10ths of a percent decrease in our tax base this year, projected over the current year.
And when you see $500,000 being set aside instead of $1,300,000 for emergencies, you know, you know, you gotta, that should be, emergencies I don't think should be cut as possible because you never know anymore with the, with the things that are happening, weather-wise and everything else, we're gonna probably need something.
Yeah, Mr. Redwell?
Yeah, this is just a line item. Legal fees, is that, is that a charge back for cable or is that actual, cable's in current legal fees?
That is an actual charge.
Oh, that's their outside, that's working on the franchise?
Oh, okay.
Outside council.
And so since the contracts are being settled, I think that's where they anticipated, or they should be, we should be able to get a reduction in cost because it's not as active.
You know, the half million dollars that she put in the contingency, that's all the money, that's more than the money we got in the increase in our cost of living. It was only, what, $490,000?
$163,000.
Yeah, so we're in a hole already and we haven't even, we haven't got to the contingencies.
Okay. Library's sources of revenue is primarily property taxes that are assessed. There's a library bill which, there's also some charges for services that are in here, penal fines and some other revenue. They do make, Dave, if you'd like to talk through what these revenue sources are, because I'm not necessarily a library expert, so...
Well, I'm not sure. I think everybody's aware of what, well, I'm trying to figure out what I wanna look at. I brought a bunch of stuff and always too much.
The penal fines, how many overdue books are there?
That is, that is our, that is our part, that's not that. You're talking up there. This is our share of the county's, you get a ticket. But other, it would include things like, we get, I think, how much do we get? We get a certain amount from Lathrow Village for that. First now, okay, so the state, the Library of Michigan, we get $40,000 approximately and that's all we get from the state. And then contractual income, we get about $120,000 from Lathrow Village. Copiers, $52,000. Overdue books, $75,000. That's pretty good. And that does include lost or damages too. But penal fines actually was more than $100,000 last year, but you never know. So we try and go with an average. Investment income, we made approximately, oh wait, I'm looking at the wrong here. Last year, we made $98,000 in investments. So reimbursables, $54,000. And then we had scheduled to use $111,000, about $112,000 in fund balance, but we did not last year. We're looking at doing some this year, but that's, oh, that's not revenue, sorry.
Well, it'll be plugged into about $215,000.
Right. So we have tried, we are trying, we have two goals, two major goals. One is to start putting back some of the money that we took out of our materials, funds, books, other materials. We've started increasing it, I think we moved it up about 4% this year. And then the other thing is that we've got to, we are doing everything we can to be able to restore ours. At this point, I have, I have the dubious honor of telling you that we need three full-time additional positions, but we can't fund them yet. So until we see some increase in funding, we're not adding people, but we know that that's what we would need to do to be able to bring those hours back.
And they are maintaining the same level of employees?
Mr. Redwell?
Last year, going over the budget, you mentioned that you had an efficiency study done to see if you can consolidate services or floors or whatever.
Yes. We had, we did get that study done and the basic results was, yeah, you're right, you know, everything went to the dogs when you reduced your hours and the money dropped when you lost, we were lost funding. And that's when everything started going downhill as far as our use and all that stuff. They did look at our, it was kind of a, what do I wanna call it, an employee efficiency study for the most part. They did say, well, what if you put all your books on one floor? What if you put all your DVDs, music, computers and all that on another floor? I haven't yet to figure out, I've been, I've looked at it, I don't think that it would, there's not enough space, let me put it that way. We don't have an even, even switch. What they were looking at in doing so was that then we could have, instead of having two librarians on two floors and three computer assistants, we could just have computer assistants on two floors and librarians on one floor. So they were saying you might be able to get by without adding additional personnel. But the key is, we need more personnel. We have too many people trying to do two or three jobs. And I think that's, you know, I'm not in any different situation than the rest of the city. I know that everybody's doing everything they can and additional. We also hope to add some more programs back, but at this point, it becomes very difficult. When, you know, we're open seven days a week and through the, through the school year, we will be closing on Sundays after Memorial Day. But at this point, I don't foresee us being able to restore those hours for a couple more years.
I also know there was some talk about potential extra revenue and maybe renting out some of the meeting spaces or anything like that. Was that looked at? Is that just something we don't want to do?
We've not explored it deeply. There is a philosophical issue that the library board has been very opposed to having for-profit groups use the meeting rooms. The other problem that is, is kind of tied back to the hours is we are only open Monday and Wednesday nights. So we end up with programs on Monday and Wednesday nights. Most of the programs that people want to be able to pay or would be willing to pay to have, come to us, would be of an evening. So it kind of circles back around to that issue. You know, we will always be open to revisiting it, but the biggest concern is that the library is seen as a neutral location for the most part. If someone were to come in and hawk a product, for lack of a better term, and they would be trading on our good name, and if they were trading a poor product, we truly believe that it would, it would reflect badly on the library. Now, I still am not sold that there are a lot of companies out there that want to use us for profit. I dipped a couple times into the water and tried to let, like, one company, MSC or MCX, something like that, they wanted to hold a staff meeting and they were willing to pay and it was during the daytime, we had a room free and I said, "Okay, let's try it." They canceled. And so, you know, I'm just, I'm not hearing a lot of it. So I don't know if there's something out there, but I really don't at this point have anybody who could do the intake and schedule all that. We've, you know, we've even talked about maybe what we would work with Parks and Rec to have the folks that do their booking of rooms do ours. But I have a real concern because we wanna make sure that they're available for our programs. Today, we had Weatherfest, we had over 1,000 people come through. We had 500 schoolchildren in the morning and then, and then just various other people. And Channel 4 did their news, weather reports for four or five times today. It's a difficult thing, but we are, we are trying to address it. And I was also prepared to tell you that we are addressing the idea of our gift funds. We have approximately $900,000 in gift funds. And at last board meeting, which was last Wednesday night, the board approved several expenditures. And in fact, I thought I'd just share with you some of the expenditures that we are going to be doing with, with the library building authority money. We're going to do some window repair and maintenance to the tune of $60,000. We're going to replace the carpet in the first floor, $40,000. We're going to replace the lighting in the teen room that's failing, that's $20,000. We're looking at an audiovisual equipment upgrade of $170,000. And then we maybe, we're going to revisit what the fountain's gonna cost, because we know that there's gonna be some cost to get the fountain running again. It has been two years and it has some water damage. But we don't have a final expenditure there. Of course, out of that 900,000 of gift funds, we're going to be putting 250,000 towards the Northland Art Purchase. We're looking at $35,000... Pardon?
That's not correct. It's 300.
Well, they haven't voted on it yet, so I'm just going with what they voted on.
I know what they told me.
I know, okay. I'm not trying to, I'm just, I'm just going with what I was given, okay? The Storytime Room is going to be refurbished, $35,000. We're going to replace the public computers, which are seven years old, $114,000. We're going to look at replacing some furniture to the tune of $20,000 for each year over the next three years. Additional money for collections, we're gonna add $6,000, $7,000 for collections, some additional money for continuing education, program expenses and, you know, so you get the picture. I did have handouts for you all that would, that would help you, let you see what we've, what we've decided on in that respect. But I know that Lynn and I talked, and she said, "You know, you guys have never really budgeted for gift funds." And I said, "That's because I don't think we ever realized that gift funds needed a budget." So, because we have just not, not expended them. And I, I agree with the mayor that, you know, the money that people gave us was not meant to be held on to forever. It needs to be used because if we use it, I truly believe that after we use it, we will see more people saying, "I like what they did, I'm gonna give you some too."
So Fred, Council Chair, what is the directive for, you know, what action are we taking? Does, who, is it the library board that approves it? Does council approve? I mean, I need a little bit of direction so I know if this needs to be a technical adjustment to be, to get this added to the budget?
I would incorporate this as part of a separate component of the adoption of the budget, but the library board does make recommendations to council.
The library board under the charter has the care, custody, control of the library. But what, what has always been the check and balance is that, until they've come to the council and they've said this is what we wanna do and they go through the bidding process, because the relationship that you have, if you don't assess and actually levy their mills, they have no money coming in. So that is what's produced this kind of symbiotic relationship between the two. So yes, I think the library board clearly can say, "We wanna use this, this and this," but I think when it, when it comes down to it, when you take bids and so forth, it's always good to come back to the council and get that in front of them just to keep the process that we've always observed kind of together.
Okay. And I had sent to a question of that nature, saying, "What needs to be bid and go through the bidding process and what needs to go before council to be approved?" And the library board was thinking, "Well, you know, we don't know if we need council approval to spend gift monies, so we would definitely want to tell them what we're going to do."
Well...
Because the gift money was given to the library, not to the council.
But it's still public money, so that it should...
Well, it's not public money, it's a private gift, isn't it?
Absolutely, it's public money.
Okay, but it's not tax dollars.
Right, once it's been, once it's, right, it's public money. But, which means you should bid if you're going to buy whatever, you should bid it.
Okay.
And again, it comes back to the council just so the process is on the table.
And that's what we wanted clear because we really have not spent much in that.
Right.
In that way. Other than, library building authority has spent some money, but I think it was taken before council, but we did a large, large amounts.
Yeah, I think both of the bidding process, right, it comes back to the council.
So are you saying all of it, any expenditures, or are you saying anything over $10,000?
Well, I think that the parameter is by the $10,000. If it's, if it's over 10...
It has to be. We went through the same thing with the baseline fund. When the city took the baseline money that was all donated money, then we lost all control of just saying we're gonna spend it.
Okay.
It had to be bid, we had to go through the whole process. And that's why it added another nine months.
To the project.
Doing the project.
Understood.
Completing the project.
Just wanted to make sure and I appreciate that clarification.
You know what, Lynn, you and I, as you will take a look at the resolution pertaining to the library, but we'll tighten it up in consideration of the city agreeing to levy the following, purchasing personnel. We can use that to tighten this up and then define...
That it will come back?
These trust and agency funds, yes. Just to put this issue to bed.
Mr. Redwell?
Dave, what, in your peer group of libraries?
Yes.
Which one are humming along quite well? Are all of them in sync?
Many of them are having the same problems. Redford is having some real issues. There have been, not all of the libraries have had to shorten hours. Some of them have shortened, like, had more holidays, but some of them have just been able to cut in other areas. Nobody is totally humming along, right, recovering. If any, I might, I might say that maybe West Bloomfield and maybe Rochester Hills, but I know that Farmington Hills is having some, some issues. And I know that Canton has had some, Canton's doing fairly well, but they've got some issues too.
Okay, so what are they doing? Are they more heavily funded than you are? I mean, Rochester, Bloomfield, Canton, they're doing something differently?
I think that they're in areas where property values have recovered.
So they can move them?
So they had, yes. And to be honest with you, Southfield, we took a bigger hit than most. And I think, and we took it later than most. There were libraries like Baldwin and some of those others who got hit almost a year before we did because they're not quite as heavily commercial. Commercial values seem to drop after, but our commercial values and even our home values do not seem, as Lynn was saying, they're not going back. You know, I bought my house in 2007, I just had it appraised and the appraiser gave me a, I mean, I found this out today. I paid $190,000 in 2007 and I live in Southfield. She told us our house is worth $99,000. I can't even refinance.
Get another appraisal.
Well, I'm definitely going to, but it made me so mad, I was just, I was, I walked in, my wife said, she said, and I said, "You gotta be kidding me." Because, but, you know, we, we are not recovering the way some of the other communities have.
The property values are going up. It's the headly that's keeping, that's frustrating us.
Of course, when they do appraisals, remember they do that half-mile radius and what the...
That's true.
So that, that kinda handcuffs us a lot.
For all the house that I fixed, I got six different figures.
I'm gonna have to ask you, because I couldn't find an appraiser, so we'll talk.
The other thing that is challenging for us is, you know, our legacy costs. That is another item that is prohibiting us from really being competitive as it relates to when we're looking at other communities. Some communities, not all, I'm not saying all, but some communities have been able to kind of compress the impact that legacy costs are.
Well, and I think some of that's going away for us. Many of, many of my folks have retired. I think I was the first department that came in under the two-tier. So you guys save money.
That's where the legacy costs are killing us. That's what's killing us, those folks that are retired.
Well, I'm sorry, but I'm, as far as most of my folks...
They retired, they lived to be 150.
Yeah. They're not, I'm not gonna bring any more, maybe that's what I mean to tell you. The people I'm hiring are coming in... you. The people I'm hiring are coming in.
Yeah, that's a tier two, yeah, that's, that's going to save us in the future, but the ones that, the ones we have now.
That are here, are here.
Yes, that's right, that are. I have a question. Your other, that's pretty, it seems to be about 22 or 23% jump from 15, 16 to 16, 17. What do you have in mind that's going to bring in that much?
Actually, it's the use of fund balance.
Oh.
I probably should have pulled that out myself, yeah. So it's about a $100,000 increase, which is, yeah.
It is almost $100,000.
For a planned use. And for the sake of, and I don't think I put it in, did I put it in the notes on the other side? One of the things, no, I must have, I'm sorry.
Excellent, you went backwards.
No, you have 230.
Oh, okay. Yeah, one of the things that happened, they're planning on using 215,000 in fund balance and, and just for the sake, I mean, you know, I tried my best to be as neutral as possible, but they really have not used, even though they've planned fund balance for the last several years, they really have not gone in to use fund balance. So have to give them a little bit of credit on being able to be fiscally responsible as far as trying to manage.
That's their contingency fund.
We do have approximate, well, right now, I, I called up and got the number, it was $8 million. If we spend every penny that we are allowed to spend for the remainder of this year, we would still have over 6 million, or, no, excuse me, over 5. But I don't think that we'll spend all of it from this year, but, but we have maintained approximately $5 million in fund balance.
Okay.
Okay.
Are there any other questions?
I got one more.
Oh.
So is this planned use of fund balance compared to the amount that we had this past year?
It's about $100,000.
But you never, you haven't used it?
No, we didn't touch, we did not.
Planned to use it, but you didn't use it?
We, we had it in case and, and in fact, I think, I have to remember what we actually turned in in our budget, but I think one of the things that we had planned to use, we had put the $114,000 for new computers, we had actually built it into the budget, but now we've gotten approval to use gift funds instead, so that would, that may offset that 100. So we may actually be the same, but I don't, I don't remember offhand. But yeah, there's, it's capital improvements that we've done some of that.
Yeah, have we put a fee for parking on the table?
Every, I've, I've talked about that two or three times and I can tell you that, that nobody is, is actually making money. There's been some communities that have, have pulled all their meters. It, it really doesn't make you a lot of money. I mean, and to be honest with you, if you're going to, to put a fee for parking in the library, you're going to have to do the entire campus. And if you want to do that, that's fine, but it makes no sense to do it just for us because what will happen is people will just walk over from the court. They'll park over there and they'll walk over. And if we did just this, this part of the, of the campus, then they'll go to the other side or whatever. But I, I truly think that all that's going to do is be a tax on poor people and I think it's going to not really, not really make enough money for the installation of the equipment and, and the parking meters. But, I mean, that would probably be a...
The new way they do it.
I, yes, is use credit cards and, yeah, like, for now.
This is a box up by the door and you go and you take your ticket and you put it on your window and...
That, that would probably be a, a, something that, that planning could look into. It's not my area of expertise, but I, I, you know, I don't know for sure. I know that Nick Manda had done it, but that's been 2006. So, I mean, he, he had actually showed me his, his study that showed it what.
Denny Ham does it, Roy Hook does it, Denny Ham does it.
And they're both, they're all small communities where they do all of their downtown.
Any other questions?
The only other thing I wanted to address was, if, if it, no one understands the legacy costs. Legacy costs are typically generated when in the past, under a contractual agreement for employees which will include retirement, healthcare, pensions and et cetera. So those are things that just come with a history of accumulated costs and, and unfunded liabilities. And that's what those legacy costs are.
Lynn, are you comfortable talking about Maximus and possible future implement, what we could see that that when that study's done?
Um, yeah, yes. What, well, what, what we, what my observation is that we allocate costs across the city. So for example, we have, you know, tech services provide services, accounting and budget provide services. And we've been trying, been trying to look at the basis for allocation across the city for a lot of the charges. I have not really seen, you know, the results that I'm looking for. So we have engaged Maximus, which is a firm that does cost allocation plans. They were doing a cost allocation plan for us. I was hoping that we would get it done in time for budget, but at the end of the day, I had to choose the budget over finishing the plan. So my hopes is in the next couple weeks, we'll pick that back up because we do have to have that cost allocation plan for Michigan Works and maybe some of the other grants. What I hope to do there is also to revisit all of our allocation models. So that, at some point in the future, we'll come back to finance the results of those, of that plan. So, I don't know.
There were some reductions made in the last few years that were, the numbers did not necessarily reflect changes that we were saving. For example, John Choju, where facilities had substantially less people, we didn't go back and tie those reductions back to the actual reduction in personnel that was arbitrarily determined. Now, Dave, how about $500,000 was knocked out in your facilities charges?
Uh, it went from, it went from $1,036,000 to $844,000. So it went by the half.
So it's down to 940, originally.
So there were some decisions made and it wasn't necessarily rooted in, in what our actual experience was. And that was meant to help the library and Parks and Rec out. And one of the tasks, you know, buried deep within the audit findings, they said, you know, you should really examine this indirect cost. So we started this process.
So hopefully we'll have some results from that.
When you put, when the different departments put the budget together, how do they account for the cost of in-kind?
When we say in-kind, are you saying, let's just, as an example, say, I spent a week helping, I'll just say the library. I, I spent a week helping the library with some accounting issue that was in-depth and I'm not charging him for that. So is that what you're saying?
No, that's, that's taking it out of one pocket, putting it in the other. I'm talking about the partnerships we have with outside.
Oh.
Outside groups that we give the in-kind, but it really costs us money.
Yeah.
Because when we're doing that project, we're not doing something, something else.
And honestly, I don't believe that we are quantifying that. I, I have not seen, that doesn't mean my experience, I have not seen where, where that's quanti, you know, I haven't seen organizations quantify that.
We just figure it's our job.
That's not to, that's not to say that we can't track it.
The task force?
To, you know.
Yeah. No, we don't, there's no way for us to know who's working on the task force. So that would be something that the council would have to keep track of on their own because we don't get the data of who's actually working that task work. We get, when we budget, if they're one person, their salary is whatever their salary is and that's, that's the person in the budget. What they're actually doing, we don't really know. Now, when you're talking about like auto-funds, where we actually have a fund to track that, we do track that because it's grant related and we, we know who's actually assigned to that. But those outside tasks, we don't, we really don't track that.
Okay, well, it also is, we were just, the other day, we were talking about, somebody wanted to use their front lawn. An outside group wanted to use our front lawn. So we partner with them, we say that's a city project in, in, in cooperation with another organization. So our, our folks are, you know, either planting flowers or doing whatever needs to be done, putting up fencing or, or whatever needs to be done for, to make that a successful organization, a successful project. Well, our people are spending time, which is money.
So let me just ask this question. So if we are co-sponsoring.
Yes.
We are receiving some intangible benefit or perceived benefit as a result of co-sponsoring that organization.
And we're good corporate citizens.
So, and just, and this is just, we can definitely evaluate this. If, I would think that if we're consistent, if we're gonna agree to sponsor something, then okay, that will be in-kind. If we're gonna, because there are instances where we do charge for the police to monitor, fire and things like that.
Of course.
So, I mean, if we want to, from a, from a community perspective, quantify and say, hey, you know, we have 10 million hours of, you know, things that we contribute to our, you know, corporate citizens, we can, we can, you know, probably work with, I would say work with, I don't know if it would be accounting, I don't want to throw that there, but I would definitely be willing to help come up with something so that we can price things like that out.
And, you know, maybe I'm just...
Well, hey, I'm in favor of anybody who uses frontline charging a fee.
Yes.
Rather than, you know, but that's me, I'm the accountant, I want, I want to cover every bit of my costs.
Yes, okay.
Okay, last department. Part, yeah, this is my department, Parks and Rec. Ooh, we made it, I'm not a pumpkin yet. Okay. So I'm, I'm learning a little bit, Doug Locke is here to kind of help me out. I've been learning a lot about Parks and Rec. Parks and Rec is a relatively, a large department, has a budget of 6.8 million. There are several things that they do here. They provide golf, they have two golf courses. We, they oversee all the parks, services and facilities. They run recreation and cultural programs and also some things for the seniors. For the most part, and, and I'm just, I'm going to be real honest here, there really were no changes in fees and, and for programs and special events. Pretty much all the rates that we were charging are staying the same. Property taxes were flat. We do know that Parks and Rec has struggled because they, they, they don't really have a structural deficit. We've been talking about a lot of this. The decline in revenue, I'm just going to look at it from a big picture. We did not use as much fund balance, you know, use of fund balance was, I don't want to say it was a, a plug, but one of the things I really want to be in a position to do, any department that really feels the need to use fund balance, either it's going to be for capital purpose or one, a purchase or one-time situation, or we have to have a planned level. I really don't want to get in the business of just pulling numbers out of using fund balance. I mean, I want to keep it under, whether it's 10% or 5%, so that we have a progressive plan to just kind of maintain and recover from those structural deficits. Really, there was only one incre, uh, one additional employee that was being added to their budget. We don't have anything for contingency. For this, last year, they were able to put a little bit towards contingency. You all know the facilities that they maintain. Nine facilities, 30 plus parks, 800 gallons acres of grounds. The biggest thing, the biggest concern that I have, and this is, you know, starting Doug at the end, is since we have a structural deficit, we really need to take some time to really strategically think about what we want our Parks and Rec department to look like. May not necessarily want to, you know, close facilities or things like that. I'm, I've, you know, the kind of things on the table, but, I mean, we need to decide what is this organization, what is this department going to look like and what do we want the funding model to look like going forward. So, and that's why I'm making a recommendation, really to get a strategic plan so we can work towards getting that structural balance.
In the revenue piece, the golf, 703,000, does that include Terry Ann Ryan's, what she can, yeah, what she contributes to? Because in her contract, she gets a piece of it, but she also pays us a piece of it.
Um, Doug?
I think it's like 12% she pays us.
I believe it does.
Good evening, everybody. It's way past my bedtime and I didn't know everybody wants to get out of here. Through the chair, it does include Terry Anthony's compensation.
Okay.
There are a lot of other factors. If I can just hit on some key points. As a department, we're kind of living the same dream as the library and Lynn has already highlighted some, some of the issues. We have a lot of legacy issues, not when it comes in terms of retirees, but a lot of legacy costs. For as long as I've been here, 16 years, we've tried to gradually whittle down the facility matrix from about $1,005,000, now it's about $938,000. We also have to make payments on two LRF loans. The first one, our department was saddled with back in the mid to late 90s to redo Evergreen. That cost us $175,000 a year, principal and interest. Carpenter Lake is another one. That was a 10-year LRF note and that's $100,000. So the point I'm trying to make is that there are a lot of large numbers in our budget that are pre-allocated. We really don't have a lot of control over them. And to put things in perspective, 10 years ago, our millage, and we too have a dedicated millage, as you all know at the table, it was, we were almost a $10 million budget and about 5.8 million of that LSU was based on the millage. So those large numbers are obviously a greater percentage, a larger numerator compared to now, we're below $7 million. I brought up the issue in prior committee of the whole meetings. Our department suffered from Noah's Ark syndrome. We had two of everything. We had two ice arenas, we had two, we still have two nine-hole golf courses, we had two rec centers. And what Fred and I have discussed on many occasions, as well as Lynn, we have to flatten our organizational structure. And Lynn and I have had some very productive conversations, but if you look at the FTE count, right now, we're operating at 16 FTEs. That's more or less a wish list. There's no landscape architect, there's no executive secretary. I've discussed with Lynn that personally, I feel it's a recipe for disaster that two or three major revenue generating buildings are being run predominantly by non-career staff. Jonathan Ron is the only full-time staff member. He could retire tomorrow. So, you know, Mr. Zorn alluded to it a couple hours ago, that we've been making ends meet by engaging in more and more public-private partnerships. And that's the model that, that I'm recommending moving forward.
Could we make more money in the pavilion by better marketing?
I've been asked that question many, many times and I'm not trying to dilute the product that we're selling, but the pavilion is kind of a stepping stone or a starter home, if you will, towards whether it's Burton Manor for wedding receptions or the suburban collection. You know, I've also discussed the possibility, I'm willing to listen if, you know, this body decides, go out and do an RFP and see if we can put the pavilion under a contractual relationship or the ice arena. Because we're that bare-bones staff right now. We're, we're running out of options. So I think to answer your question, marketing is an issue, but you, you know, it's, it's a, it's a very nice, relatively well-maintained, older building, but it's what, 40 years old and we need some, you know, sizzle to sell. And that's where I think Fred and John, you know, with the appropriate digital displays in the pavilion, with crawlers utilizing the electronic signage on the front lawn, that can help us. But it, it's not going to get us to where I ultimately want us to be.
Okay, great. Sounds like a project for a committee to take a look at and see what, what can be done to buff it up to some, um, Mr. Redwell?
No, I didn't have.
Oh, okay. Mr. Manelma.
You mentioned you have 17 employees. This says you're budgeted next year for 24. Is that, is that on the call? A wish list?
Yes. I mean, right, right now, I started reading off the list. The landscape architect position is part of that 24. Two facility supervisors, we had a major outflux or outflow of talent when Janet Huseinu, Patty Burey and Bob Murray retired. That was 87 years of experience that walked out the door. The head screenkeeper position... years of experience that walked out the door. Um, the head screenkeeper position, uh, 15 years ago, we had six full-time golf maintenance people. We're down to one now because we recently promoted Paska Chanik at our Beechwoods location to park supervisor. Um, I mentioned there's no executive secretary. Um, we're really doing it with smoke and airs and relying very heavily on our non-career staff.
Has there been any thought in also maybe revamping the way that we do some of the park rentals, like with the shelters? Um, you know, for example, right now, it's an all-day rental. Is there a company to split it up into four-hour increments? Some people don't need it for 12 hours. Um, you know, some people want to do a dinner, some people want to do a lunch, just, you know, different, different ideas.
Yeah, it's at some point.
If you could always, you know, maybe generate more potential revenue that way.
We can definitely look into that. Uh, picnic shelters, as you know, is probably one of our few, uh, revenue generating programs that we offer. And we're always, you know, we're always open to doing things differently, whether it's the registration, or, you know, basing it on a lottery system. I have a meeting with, uh, Laverne and her staff on Thursday to discuss, uh, different software packages that can be applied, not only to something simple like the software scheduling, but, um, ice arena, ice scheduling, as well as the picnic shelters. The model applies in all those scenarios.
Is there?
Probably not.
Is it about picnic shelters?
Thank you.
Give me a second.
Okay, Mr. Fagassi.
They'll come back to you.
Okay, Mr. Fagassi, in the meantime.
Where are you as far as, is the alcohol in both golf courses?
We, I'm proud to say that we just got the license from Lansing. I had somebody drive up and get it. Came to that point. We are going to be open, uh, by the end of this week serving alcohol at Evergreen.
What about Beach?
Beechwoods, the application is up there. I've even contacted, you know, the city lobbyists to try to expedite things. It's a never-ending process, but we've been ready to serve food at both sites, I mean, for the last six, five, six weeks. I mean, fortunately or unfortunately, the weather's kind of been cooperating with us because our numbers are slightly down just because it's been rainy and it's been very cold. But Friday, we're going to do a soft launch. Um, we're already working with Michael Mannion. We're going to, you know, do marketing from, uh, electronic sign on Facebook, the internet, and then we'll do an all-users email internally among city staff.
Parks and Recreation used to get quite a few grants. I see that in revenue, there doesn't seem to be any grants, period.
Actually, um, to the contrary, we're in varying stages. Pebble Creek, uh, there was a grant that Ms. Carlock, uh, left us with. Inglewood Park, second phase of that one, and a recreation passport grant at Beechwoods. They're all in various stages, and, I mean, this is dating myself, but probably like '02, '03, we were instructed by O M B at the time not to budget revenues, be conservative, because if they didn't pan out according, you know, with the match, then we were, we were going down a sticky path.
Who, who works on your grant proposals?
Right now, nobody. Um, we had a, we had a non-career individual. Um, I had, I'd hired 16 months ago, three individuals. Two out of the three have worked out. Uh, Grant's individual, uh, was returning from Chicago, and she didn't work out. The other two were Mr. Spatafor, who's working, uh, on the golf concessions from Royal Oak, and, um, Kathy Friesa, who's been a jack of all trades and really indispensable to our department.
Is it? You found out?
I remember my questions.
Okay.
Um, are there, let me gather my questions. It's not, it's not, I didn't know yet. Um, are there, are there any capital improvements, budgeted, or is it pretty much trying to just maintain the deal?
Not capital improvements per se. We are an active participant in, uh, the planning department's CIT plan. However, that being said, in our park services, uh, division, that's where capital improvements, such as whether we need a team mower, or we, this pertains more to last year's fiscal budget, but we just got 24, uh, state-of-the-art, um, golf carts. So, to more specifically answer your question, for 16, 17, there's about $300,000 worth of capital improvements, but it's all dedicated to park services, equipment, things of that nature.
And then, in your budget process, Fred touched on some of this before about, you know, closing up Johnny Grace, possibly moving people out of the burgess. Was that, were those cost savings put into the budget or that's a hopeful?
Um, again, I'm, I'm a very conservative person, so once I, once Fred comes to me and says, I have an offer that's going to council and that, that, then I can proceed with, with doing it. I really would rather keep it in and say, hey, we got this extra then, and take it out, and we're still stuck.
We'll look to softball, for example, Johnny Grace, reduce the heating and cooling costs as much as possible, but we'll still have to maintain a presence until we can, um, move, move the asset. I do want to comment, uh, on capital improvements at Parks and Rec. Within the facilities budget, Parks and Rec is probably the bigger winner of where your ADA money's going. Beechwood elevator, your ram, uh, your, your restaurants here, there, if you were to, if, if there's a department that won, where that money got moved out of cable, it was probably Parks and Rec. On the four grants, they're basically project management grants, uh, not to, uh, you know, you finish the project, you submit the reimbursement, and the state comes to the table. Due to the scope of work, it's not a, uh, complex, it, it, it's basically good project management. All you've got ECT handling all the project management on these four, on the four grants. You didn't mention Orsdale Woods, unless that's, uh, and...
We can discuss that.
The funding on that, these grants comes, your match is coming out of your fund balance, and I don't, Doug, know how much that is. Other than Pebble Creek, it's our intent to start to charge the match on Pebble Creek to the Smart Zone, because if the Pebble Creek sits within that Smart Zone.
Yeah, the match on the two larger grants is about 350.
Okay. And the other, you...
Pebble Creek and Inglewood.
For example, the, the Beechwood grant, that work will be done in time for your summer camps.
Yes.
That's what I was told by your staff three weeks ago.
And that's the one that's the smallest of the three, and that's through the recreation passport grant program.
Does the, does the pool make any money over the summer?
Traditionally, that loses between 50 and 70,000 dollars a year.
And what do you do with the ice arena?
That's why, in an, in an ideal world, you know, getting ahead of myself, um, splash, splash pad would be the ultimate solution because you minimize your labor costs. You don't have right across, you know, parameters like Garden in Broken County, as they're say. If you're running a concession stand, it would be a much more streamlined process.
What do you do with the ice arena during the summer?
Use for camps.
As an ice arena?
No. As a matter of fact, they're breaking down the ice now as we speak. The season's over.
Dylan, Lynn, could you guys touch on the accounting anomaly in your expenditure side, uh, in your staff, and something that we were going through, and that we would like to correct that, so we have a truer match between our expenditures and our revenues?
I know it's like, Doug, but this is just... An hour, so we turned into a pumpkin. Um, two weeks ago, I had a very productive meeting with both Lynn and Fred, and long story short, you know, I understand about, you know, gas being things of that nature, but our revenues have always been poorly matched to our expenses. So, when I first got here, I introduced like a P and L process, and it went for, you know, the programming committee to see if we could come as close to break even. Um, you would, you would think that all of our full-time staff members would come out, for example, out of administrative account, but when Bob Murray was here, he was a full-timer, he came out of park services. Um, trying to think of some other examples.
And were that significant as we try to analyze different programs? We're looking at revenues and finding out that expenditures being charged to any one of those, uh, six accounts. And, you know, so one of the things, as you're, you're looking at the cost-effectiveness reevaluating, you have to have a better alignment of your expenditures to the revenues. And it, it creates these gaps, a lot of, you know, and one program may look stronger than the other, when in fact, there are other things actually that are charged.
I mean, another large number, I mentioned the facility matrix, you would think that would come out of administration as well. That comes out of park services. And another, you know, another example off the top of my head was to get a true picture, revenue and expense of the golf courses. When we had the full complement of golf maintenance people, well, I kept hearing 60, 70,000 dollars of overtime, but it was never parsed to be allocated towards snow removal. It was truly dedicated to the golf courses. So, it's, it's something that Lynn and I are going to work on, um, in the near future.
I'd like to point out that that's not a accounting anomaly, that's a budgeting anomaly. That's the way they, that's where they, they asked to have it budgeted. I don't pick those numbers out, and so...
No offense.
For whatever reason, I just kind of have problems with saying, this accounting, we, we are actually, for all intents and purposes, I think that, uh, the accounting matches the dollar perfectly, because you, all of your, every single one of your proj, programs has an expenditure org and a revenue org. Every single one of them in, in your programs. So, you have a matching thing. So, if you don't like the way something's budgeted, you can change that.
You're right. It's 25 before midnight.
Final thing, in, in a final iteration of this, I'd like to see the Toss program put in this, because it is ran by Parks and Rec, and it'll probably be seniors Toss taken out. You have three, three funding sources from Smart, 20,000 from Providence Hospi, Hospital.
There's the piece from Beaumont, and there's the municipal credits and the community credits that are about 180 grand from Smart, from Smart. And then Toss, as long as I've been here, was a separate budgeting on Mr. Peter. It was completely off the...
Yeah, when I first got here, it was in 557.
Was it?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question. Doesn't, doesn't really have to do with budgeting, but it has to do with your programming. Uh, earlier today, we were criticized because it appeared that we don't have, uh, programs for young people. Can you tell me about how many people, how many young people take part in the Parks and Rec program, including the field zone?
There's thousands. I mean, there are three different levels. There's the Parks and Rec programs from the camps, where we have Wildwood, Evergreen, we used to have a teen camp, um, and tadpole. And you've got the field zone that we also, you know, work cooperatively with. And then the third leg of that stool, if you will, is PYG, or Southfield Youth Assistance, where Holly Graves, who's our primary programmer, works with the different funding agencies, um, to hook up, uh, underprivileged children.
Okay, so, the field zone, uh, works with middle school?
Correct.
Uh, what age group?
It's, it's basically right between the ages of 11 up to like the tween age years, and our department has helped them out, excuse me, to make and work logistically, helping them provide, uh, we provide transportation through smart buses, um, to pick up at the high school and the middle schools.
Okay, and your, your camp program for the summer is, are they signing up for it now?
Yes, and I'll use it as a public service announcement if, uh, we're still hiring, we're ramping up for, uh, camp counselors, golf staff, as well as, uh, park services staff. But yes, and they traditionally sell out all the sessions of all three camps.
There's scholarship money from, uh, you, this is...
Right, yep.
Okay, and you also have the sporting program, sport programs too?
We have a huge, uh, adult softball, adult softball leagues, um, and then not to, not to mention our relationship with Miracle League, that whole, uh, youth segment, and we have extensive therapeutic recreation programs.
And, and the field zone is, uh, fully subscribed, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Uh, any other questions for Parks and Rec? All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, I don't want to see what you look like as a pumpkin.
Okay, so, yeah, no, I'm surprised, I've, I've been standing, that's what it is. We are done. We got through all of the budget. Um, and so, if, if you don't mind, I just want to talk through the next steps, just so I can make sure that I walk away understanding expectations as we move forward.
Okay.
So, on June 20th, um, that is where the budget is going to be adopted, and you will get the public notice Wednesday.
I wanted to say something about when it's going to be adopted. And I was telling Dan about that. You know, we have to have five votes. I mean, under the charter, you must have five votes to adopt a budget.
Yeah.
And it has to be adopted by a certain date. And, and so, those who are not here, I hope they're hearing me, because, you know, I was telling Dan, I said, I would short one vote one time, and I sent the police department after Schlossel, and Saturday, if you can imagine that, to come in and vote, so we can adopt the budget on Saturday morning. But it's, it doesn't get passed, we don't have five votes.
We'll spread the word, no one can be sick.
Or don't change the time of that from last year.
Don't be sick.
Well, it, the meeting's, it's always 6:30, so, there's two meetings, and there's a special budget meeting to adopt and then celebrate.
Great. Linda, that's for the floor, so she can explain, she could ask her what's coming up next.
Okay, so I just, and I'm, I'm gonna move back. So, June 20th, that's a Monday, um, that is the date that the budget is planned to be adopted, okay? Um, and, um, Fred and I'll be working on the presentation for that time. So, there are a couple things, or actually, there's one document, um, and, and historically, it may have been a little different, because there were some things that we, on my parking lot sheet, that I need to go back and I may need to tweak. So, one of them is you have this, uh, this budget summary document, and pretty, pretty much when you have these budget here, uh, this study session, that will be your final document. I do intend to finalize that, um, and then we go through, add some things you've asked me to, um, add. Um, and so, Fred and Mr. Chair, I just want to kind of make sure I know, um, um, at that point, is, do you want to see what the final recommended is going to be in terms of that document, um, or do we want to just deal with, I just, I just need a little bit of direction on how we want to handle that.
Well, we do have to know what the, uh...
Yes, I mean, I agree.
Yeah.
Yep. So, I don't know if, if, if we can bring, if you want me to bring it to another, or just have it as a, um, a communication, um, to say, these are the final recommended numbers.
I think usually it comes in our package.
Okay.
And we look at it over the weekend and, and...
Okay.
Because by that time, all of our questions have been asked and answered supposedly, and it's just a matter of doing the paperwork to put the budget together.
And then we'll also have the ordinance language, uh, and maybe I'll have that, move that as well. Okay? Is there any, by this being my first year with Southfield, is there anything I'm missing in this process?
Everything.
And Mr. Fagassi said, just live in the dream. And Bishop Fagassi said, just live in the dream.
Sing it one more time. Midnight summer's eve.
Me, me, me.
I'm gonna give him a hug.
Lynn, you did a great job.
Yes, you did.
You did, thank you.
Yes, it's probably one of the most thorough reviews of the budget that we've had, so...
Okay.
Okay?
That's my question.
All right. Is there anything else to come for the committee this evening?
I have, I have a thing, and I'm gonna have to say it. The Boy and the Bear, they have an unveiling on the nineteenth. It is a donor party. The Bear, and Boy and the Bear, and all the artwork was bought by the community. And the council gifted it, not gifted it, loaned it, loaned it to the library, right? I strongly believe that unveiling of something as important as something that the community bought should be shared with the community. And you can have a separate little party before or after for the donors, where the unveiling takes place, that is a Southfield community celebration. And, and I don't know how this happened, that, that it became a donor thing, but I really am appalled that that even is considered.
There is a, the other unveiling is on Monday at six o'clock on the twenty-third.
Well, the first unveiling is...
The first one is a fundraiser and donor...
Well, that's not the way it goes, it's not, you don't do things like the schools, the city, community...
It's nothing to do with the schools, I've never raised money like this before.
Well, I'm just trying to say to you that...
Well, you don't agree, because you weren't part of it, you know, and...
But listen, that's crap. If it wasn't for me, the damn art wouldn't be in this building.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Very, very, very.
You weren't here, we were, I was there about the five hundred thousand dollars.
We don't need anybody turning into pumpkins, no. But, you know...
Marshall Frederick happened to be a friend of mine, and, and I want him honored the proper way. He gave this, his life to this city with Giselle, and, and his kids called me and wanted the Boy and the Bear to be bought and, and shared publicly, and that's the way it should be.
It is going to be shared publicly, and it will be there for years to come. This is a fundraiser and a donor recognition party on, and people don't have to come, they can come Monday. No one's under the gun to give...
I don't even hear about it Monday.
Well, it's on the calendar.
Third calendar.
The calendar that'll come out next week?
Oh, we don't have it yet.
It's, it's been on, it's been announced all along, I believe it's in...
No, it hasn't. I said, I never miss a meeting, and I do my homework. I never even got a letter, an announcement, an email, or anything else.
It's in the brochure, that there are two receptions. One is Thursday, the nineteenth, and the other is Monday, the twenty-third, at six o'clock.
You know what, Nancy?
Yeah, I was gonna say, there's two, I actually...
When are you gonna let us know?
It's been out all along, Don.
Ken, you keep saying it, where has it been out?
It's in the brochure.
This brochure doesn't say anything about Monday.
It's not, that's the invitation for Thursday.
But where's the other one? Should talk it about.
I don't know.
I mean, I read it, I read it somewhere, but I don't know where I read it, right now. Is it in that one?
It's in that brochure, there. It's been the plan all along, that the Arts Commission came up with.
Just around on the backside.
It wasn't something I decided.
But Arts Commission doesn't run the city. Arts Commission is a committee, and making recommendation to the council.
They've done all the work to organize.
Well, this, it's not how it works. It's not how it works.
Well, Don, you have your way of doing things, other people do the same.
Well, mine's been successful for forty-seven years. All of a sudden, you know, it's all being, you call it a team, but it's not a team. It's you and your team, whoever it is. I mean, I don't miss meetings, and I think that this community deserves to be acknowledged when they spend five hundred thousand dollars for something that wants to be public. Enough said for me, I'm just telling you that.
Anything else? Me either.